Check, 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 check. Check, check, check.
All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to Town of Montverde Council Meeting. Real quick, before we get started, this is a special day where we recognize all of our military members who have served and protect our freedoms. And if you are a military veteran or active military, would you please rise right now so we can recognize you?
Thank you.
And if you would remain standing, and rest of us, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, withstanding one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're going to do our oath of offices. And at this time, I'd like to welcome Mayor Joe Weinkupe to come up and to receive the oath of office. And our attorney, Nita Carver-Garcia, will do the oath of office.
I, Joe Weinkupe.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Being elected mayor.
Being elected mayor.
Of the town of Montverde, Florida.
Of the town of Montverde, Florida.
Do you hereby solemnly swear or affirm?
Do you hear by solemnly swear and affirm?
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The laws of the state of Florida.
The laws of the state of Florida.
And the Charter and ordinances.
And the Charter and ordinances.
Of the town of Montverde.
Of the town of Montverde.
And that I am duly qualified.
I am, that I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution.
Under the Constitution.
Of the state of Florida.
Of the state of Florida.
And the Charter of the town of Montverde.
And the Charter of Montverde.
And I will faithfully perform.
I will faithfully perform.
The duties.
The duty.
Of the office upon.
Of the office upon.
Which I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mayor. And we'll ask Mayor Joe Weinkupe to have a seat at the dais. And next up, we're going to go ahead and seat our council members that are not up for election and within tradition. Mr. Morganelli and Ms. Womack, if you'll come up and pick a number. And one, two, three, four, in order from left to right.
One, two, three, four.
They changed sides.
All right, next, we're going to do the oath of office for Mr. Roberts. Mr. Roberts is our president.
A citizen of the state of Florida and the United States of America, being elected to town council of the town of Montverde, Florida. Do hereby solemnly swear and affirm I will support the Constitution of the United States, the laws of the state of Florida, the Charter and ordinances of the town of Montverde, and that I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state of Florida and the Charter of the town of Montverde. And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office upon which I'm about to enter. So help me God. Thank you.
Let's go ahead, and you can draw. We're going to let you draw too, Ms. Rubio. And we staffed to try to find the longest oath of office in Florida we could find, just so, you know, to make it fun for you guys. Mr. Brian Rubio, would you please come forward and receive the oath of office?
I, Brian Rubio, a citizen of the state of Florida and of the United States of America, being elected to town council of the town of Montverde, Florida, do hereby solemnly swear and affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the laws of the state of Florida and the Charter and ordinances of the town of Montverde, and that I'm duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state of Florida and the Charter of the town of Montverde, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office upon which I am about to enter. So help me God. Thank you.
It's tradition, at least, we know where you're going, but, yeah. Mayor Weinkupe, I turn the meeting over to you, sir.
All right, thank you. That was my 11th time, kids, for it. All right, so let's move on to next. We've got seats done, councilmen done. Okay, it's the election of vice mayor, so I'll open it up for nominations for vice mayor.
If we could just do roll call first, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's out of order a little bit.
Good idea. Let's do the, we don't have to do the pledge, right? Yeah, we gotta do that, okay.
You want to do the invitation?
Yeah, I'd like to do the invitation, if you wouldn't mind.
Thank you. Let's pray. Almighty and ever-living God, we do well always and everywhere give thanks to you, and we're especially grateful for the gift of this night, this place, this time, this gathering, and the wonderful people that are members and visitors too. For our holy Spirit, a blessing upon each and every person. God, guard the red, protect and I, and you, as according to your letter. In this we do pray, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Okay, now we'll do a roll call.
Councilmember Rubio.
Present.
Councilmember Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Morganelli.
Here.
Councilmember Womack.
Yes, here.
Mayor Weinkupe.
Here.
All right, thank you very much. Now, we're back to selecting a vice mayor, so I'll open up the council for nominations.
I'll make a motion for Carol Womack.
I have a motion. I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All against, say nay.
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 Okay, I just have it. All right, so we'll go on to Congress Congressional Recording, Record Recognizing for Daniel Webster has given us recognition for 100th year anniversary. So, let me see what that is. Do we want to read this, Paul? I mean, I just, that's a long thing to read there. He gave us a nice thing to put up in our library there and recognizing. Let's see, do you want to read a little bit? Okay.
Recognizing the 100th anniversary of the town of Montverde, Florida. Honorable Don Daniel Webster of the Florida, of Florida in the House of Representatives. Mr. Webster, Mr. Speaker, it is my privilege to recognize and celebrate 100th anniversary of the town of Montverde, Florida. Officially incorporated on May 18, 1925, Montverde is located on the western shore of Lake Apopka in Lake County, Florida. Montverde derives its name from the Spanish mont verde, meaning green mountain, a tribute to the area's rolling hills and natural beauty. From 1887 to 1969, Montverde was served by the Taveries and Gulf Railroad, which transported agricultural goods such as grapes, citrus, and vegetables. Over the years, the town supported a variety of industries, including a cement plant, a moss processing facility, and notably, the original manufacturing site, the Snapper mower, originally called the Snap and Turtle. Developed by local innovators Alex Neil Smith, the Snapper went on to become a globally recognized brand. Today, Montverde is home to approximately 2,200 residents and remains a vibrant small town with a strong sense of community and rural charm. It is a proud part of the Green Mountain scenic byway, celebrated for its historical significance and scenic landscapes that draw cyclists, outdoor enthusiasts, and visitors from near and far. A central pillar of the town of Montverde Academy found in 1912, the world-renowned college preparatory institution reflects the town's commitment to excellence in education. As Montverde celebrates its centennial milestone, we honor its rich past, celebrate its present, and look forward to a bright and enduring future. Again, it is my privilege to recognize the town of Montverde on the occasion of its centennial anniversary. Daniel Webster, U.S. Congress.
Well, thank you very much, Nita. All righty.
And Mayor and Council, real quick, just so everybody knows, this was read on the floor of the United States Congress, so it will forever be memorialized in the U.S. Congress Library with the town of Montverde recognizing our anniversary.
So the next time you're in D.C., stop and see it. All right, let's go move on to citizens and comments. Anybody who wants to talk to the council about something that's not on the agenda, now's the time.
Zach Sumwalt, 17557 County Road 455. I have two things. One, the library's only open four days a week. Probably at least Saturday, open. If you're going to discuss that, that's great. But I think that's nonsense right now, is that we do need somebody else for the library, because nobody can use it.
Could you step up a little bit?
Want me to eat the microphone? Can you hear me?
This close from it.
Okay, so I guess I'll repeat for the record. The library's only open four days a week. That's not enough. So that's one. Number two is the Stormwater Project. Are we going to have another chance to speak about it later on, or is it?
Yeah, it's going to be in, it's one of the subjects, so we'll be talking about it then.
Okay, well, I guess just to kick it off, I think you guys just need to cancel the whole thing. I looked at a, one of your packets.
But no, no, we announced that you.
Now doesn't matter yet?
Well, anything you want to talk to the council that's not on the agenda.
Yeah.
Is now.
Okay, so it's going to be a while from now.
You can wait, it'll be a little bit.
Okay, that's it, just the library.
Okay.
Hope to see it more, more often.
All right, thank you very much, Zach.
Can we talk about that, the library, before someone else comes up yet?
I don't know. Yeah, we can talk about it when they get done.
Okay.
Don't worry, this is going to be short. Jim Peacock, 16549 Lowry Road.
Can you guys hear him? Can you turn his mic up too, when you get a chance?
I am a, I hold a seat on the Lake County Parks and Recreation Board.
Can you hear him?
Okay. We had a meeting yesterday, and one of the things on the agenda was a, it's from a company called Parkview. And I gave you a little bit of information on it. It was approved unanimously and sent to the commission for their review and approval. And what it is, is a, they provide a camera that would focus on the park areas or the recreation areas. And the residents can download the app and see those areas, check the weather, check, see how crowded they are. I'm not advocating one way or the other, just presenting some information. It's very interesting. They've got a lot of facilities that are monitoring down south around St. Pete, Tampa area. But again, it looks interesting that the residents, once they download the app to the phone, they can check if there's a camera onto the fields over here, they could check, see how busy they were, what the weather was. And they'll also look at the other parks and recreation facilities in Lake County if the commission accepts that. There's no cost to the, to the county or the towns. They make money off advertising revenue. So obviously, the more communities and towns they have, the more they can charge for their revenue. So they're looking for new communities to accept this. They will install all the equipment. There's no recording. You know, there's, you have to look at this online. This was just some basic information I gave you. Have to look at this online and decide it might be something that the town will be interested in, particularly for the residents.
Sounds like it's something we should look at.
Would you be able to send an email with the, or look this up on the web?
It's just go Parkview app. You'll find it, you'll find it.
Thank you.
On there. But it looked very interesting, and again, we approved it, and it was sent to the county mission for their review and approval. But it looks like a very good idea, particularly for the residents, to be able to check, see how busy and the weather varies, things like that. And there's a lot of other things they offer in that app. I didn't get into it, and we didn't get into it yesterday either. So anyway, just thought you might be interested in it. Okay?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to talk to the council?
It's working. Bob Tomlinson, 16634 Magnolia Terrace, Montverde, Florida. Just wanted to bring out just a little bit of a vision that's coming to our town in the, in the coming years here. Basically, Montverde needs to, in my opinion, needs to find an additional form of income to offset the reduction of taxes or even the elimination of taxes. For example, the Amendment Five or the total elimination of taxes. Therefore, we need to be prepared as a town to be able to bring in some more income to offset if those taxes are taken away. So it's something that is important. I think that we all need to be aware of it. With that, we've also, in the coming year here, we're going to have two multimillion-dollar subdivisions that are coming in. One, obviously, Bella Colina and Osgood. And the town, I think we all can agree with, needs a major facelift, especially the town downtown quarter. When we're bringing in that type of people that are going to be moving in, it's an opportunity for the town to be able to acquire additional funds. So with that said, for the, for you all to approve the PUDs that are going to be here, how is the town presently, right now, benefiting from those particular PUDs when they're approved? And so I have some suggestions on improvement that I'd like you all to certainly consider. And it's kind of a seed that's being planted, so when it finally comes through the P and Z, at least you can have something in the back of your minds on improving our town to make it certainly a facelift for it. For an example, one thing, funding for a fountain in the roundabout at 455. It's taking out that roundabout that we have and making a really nice fountain out of that. That'd be wonderful. A lot of people thought, that I've discussed that with, thought that'd be a great idea to have that done. Another one would be to be able to have some funding or have them help fund, or their, our manager to be able to acquire some sewer for the town, town district, so that we could have something to be able to handle a restaurant and things like that, because presently, we can't do that right now. I did locate a piece of property that is off of H Street that would be perfect. I think it'd be enough property to be able to have a sewer plant there, a small sewer plant. That would be able to go directly right down H Street, right to Montverde Academy. The academy desperately needs to improve their particular sewer plant that they have. This could be a solution for them. They could also help fund it as well. And then, to have something even better than that, Truscat Park right now is literally bringing no benefit that I can really see to the town, other than a lot of cost for the town. Run now a sewer line directly all the way to, which would be a straight line right to Truscat Park, and then set that up to where we could lease land for a really high-end, nice restaurant, and also a marina right there at Truscat Park. We could acquire the funds for, to be able to have that as leasehold. That would be income. Also, any homes that wanted to connect to it, provided that that plant would be able to handle it, that would be additional funds as well, along with Osgood, too, because that is a problem with Osgood, with what they're going to have for their septic tank systems there. We see that coming down the pike. It's something to think about. And that would also tee off from that particular line going to Truscat Park would tee off, and then handle the downtown district. That's what I kind of brought out. So those are some of the things that I think that would help out. And just wanted to bring it out to you, to where we'd be able to acquire some more funds for the, for the town, if we get, you know, shortchanged basically on our taxation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good afternoon. Kelly Moore, I'm at 17029 Florence View Drive, Mag Terrace. Couple concerns. First one is safety. The new intersection in Blackstills Lake Road and Citrus Grove coming into Fosgate being, there's not a three-way stop there. On two or three occasions, I've almost gotten a car accident with people who were, you know, flying through Citrus Grove on the Fosgate, or people, the whole thing needs to be looked at before we have a serious accident there. That's one. Second one is the discussion online. I was an, I'm an educator. Sometimes I can't come to Tuesday meetings because I teach college at night. But I understand there's talk of putting a accessibility for golf carts from Will Ridge Community all the way, a pathway up Ridgewood Road. I think that that would be a bad idea, because number one, there's not that many golf carts that can climb Ridgewood Road. There's not good lighting at night. And all we need is a, you know, you know, a deadly accident with a golf cart. And, you know, we've gone this far without having golf carts coming from, let's say, Verde Ridge, underneath the bridge there. So why would Will Ridge be, you know, the next case, where, okay, we're going to try to make it more accessible for those residents, but, you know, we don't have a golf cart path. We don't have sidewalks in many places. And there's been a lot of concern lately about how all these new signs, some 14 or 15 of them or whatever, popped up on Ridgewood with flashing lights. And, you know, the town is not, is starting to take on a different look. And some of us are concerned it's not the look that we moved here for. And these concerns I'm bringing forth, you have to think about when Osgood residents are there with all that traffic, and Bella Colina comes in. When you add that with the Mountverde Academy traffic, I don't see how golf carts are really going to make it a more safe environment. You know, so that's the thing. One golf cart, I think, is a question mark. And I understand it's been passed on to the county to look at or something. But as a resident, I, I don't really feel that that's a thing we want to be trying to navigate through, that three-way stop, coming up Ridgewood, especially at night, which golf carts. And then we're going to put parameters, it has to be this kind of golf cart, has to be this, this, this. I think we're opening ourselves up for a mess with that. And I echo what Mr. Tomlinson said about, you know, the future look of the downtown. I think he had some excellent ideas he just talked about. So that's what I wanted to bring up to the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Karen Aralano, 17531 County Road 455. I just wanted to share my experience with Mountverde Day this year. You know, it was a little bit different. I know that. Different is always good. Change is good. But did not receive any notification. I don't, you know, like, in the past, where the town would invite you to come back and be a sponsor, or, hey, Mountverde, booths are open, so on and so forth. I actually almost missed my booth. But lo and behold, this year, I guess, the idea was you had to sell trinkets or sell an item to get a booth, or pay a sponsorship, which not every business in town can afford that. Some of the smaller businesses don't have the minimum $500. So I did the $500 sponsorship, and then when I showed up, there was somebody that was mixed in with the vendor. in with the vendor side, which is the good side. And they had a double space. They're not a business in town. They are not a resident in town. And I would like the town and the council and to just kind of think about supporting local. These businesses come and they try hard, and the town needs to support them like we support the town. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
You can go first. I'm sorry. Matthew Baum, 1122 Imperial Eagle Street, Groveland, Florida. Just kind of piggybacking off of Mr. Tomlinson's comments about improving the downtown. Now that we have the new board, I'd like to bring up the CRA again, because that could be a method to fund a lot of the projects in the downtown going forward. If, and since we do have new development happening, now would be the time to start developing that, to establish the baseline, so that you actually get some revenue from the CRA, so.
Don't you sit on the CRA board?
I sit on the CRA board in Groveland.
And is that what they do with their money?
They have done streetscape improvements. They have built a community center. They have funded facade improvements as well as other projects, in brief. But yes, that's what they do with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Stone, 16947 Lakeside. That was, I was in the back, so it was, every time I got up, I was like, oh no. Karen Erallano spoke on some of the stuff that I was wanting to speak on. So it's like, Mount Verde, you know, it's, it's Montverde. It's about Montverde. It's not about, it's not about any other city. It's about the residents, providing for the residents, whether you have a business, whether you're a resident here, whatever. My experience with that was also negative. About a month and a half before, I applied to become a vendor, have a little booth set up. I've had it before, several years passed, but apparently, either it was last year or this year, I don't know if it was the first year, but it seems that the handling of the booths was outsourced to a different individual or vendor. And I did not qualify, even though I have a business here in Montverde. I make things. I also do service work, depending on the situation. I have a wide variety of things that I do, and it's hard to describe that in one little fill-out form online. So she directed me to become a sponsor, and again, it was price prohibitive. I didn't want to spend the $500 for a little snippet of something. You know, and yeah, I'm right across the street from where it happens, but at the same time, the whole time, you know, I'm walking around trying to hand out business cards and doing all that, trying to make the best out of it, to promote my business, because that's my best interest, is to promote my own self. I had two individuals walk across the street, right? I could have put more signage or whatever, but at the same time, I was just so disheartened at the response that I got from not only the individual that you had outsourced the vendors to, but also within the town itself. I had to complain to several people, and finally, I got a little bit of a call back, but by that point, I was so upset, the whole situation, I just didn't want to deal with it anymore, because it's just so disheartening when your own town rejects you in a sense. And I got emails, and I got all that stuff. It took a month for this lady to get back to me, but I wound up having to call her. So that was my experience with Mount Verde. Gets my blood boiling a little bit, just thinking about. Anyways, I've got some stuff to pass up to the council, so give me one second. All right. So this is in regards to the Lakeside Drive project. I don't know if the stormwater later in the meeting involves Lakeside, so if it does, I can wait. But essentially, at, on October 26th, we all had that big old storm that came through, right? If you look at this sheet, it's hard for everybody to see, I probably should have brought a USB. The new parking spots became a lake. So I don't know, some of y'all probably saw my post on Facebook of like, now I got lakefront property. So that filled up with all that water. We didn't get nearly as much water as Eustis and Mountain Dora did, thankfully, because I'm sure my shop would have been flooded by that point. But essentially, what it did was it filled up the parking spots across the street over the curb. So that little side image there, that, just that little shiny piece at the top is the curb. It's almost five to six inches of water. And then if you look at the bottom image, that's the front of my shop and house there. It's about three inches of water behind those curbs, just flowing over my French drain in between the buildings and washing my block out at the back. If we go to this other page, you can see Sunday's rain. That's already coming across the road. And on, again, I got three, four inches of water in the front of the shop there, just from a normal rain, right? I wouldn't consider Sunday's rain anything crazy either as well. So from my best assessment, there's a couple of things happening. Back to the October 26th one, what's happening is the water that's going into the swale to the left of the parking spaces isn't being drained out by the drain on the other page. I was able to look at some of the drawings, and it says there was supposed to be a 12-inch wide rectangular notch at the back of the drain there to the left of the parking spaces. That appears to have not been handled. I put it in for a records request, and even in the punch list, it doesn't seem like that was in there. So I'm here asking why wasn't that done? And that's probably what's causing all the backup of water into the parking spots, which then comes across the road. So God forbid a hurricane, or we get the same amount of rain that Eustis and Mountain Dora got, and then I get flooded from that. Now, the other thing that's going on, and I was talking with the foreman about this, is the grade of the road comes down at a slope both sides of my shop, from the ice cream to the right-of-way. There's a little bit of a swale, like, not swale, but sloping down. And there's a part where the asphalt was stopped, and then they restarted again, and that's channeling the water directly into my parking lot. So that's from what I've gathered, what is going on. And it's leaving me fearful almost, because I don't have flood insurance. This wasn't a flood thing. This wasn't a problem before this improvement. So it said, the sign said stormwater improvement, and it improved the stormwater. So that was the main thing I wanted to come here tonight. But based on some of the other comments, I wanted to also bring up about the last time I spoke here, we do need some improvement in the downtown area. So I have applied for SBAs, but I've been since denied. So if we can look into that a little bit more about any sort of grants for beautification or anything like that, that'd be pretty, pretty good. Personally, on the golf cart issue, I'm pro golf cart. I think that they're safer than bicycles. I, bicycles don't have lights. Bicycles don't go as fast as golf carts sometimes. You know, so that's something I think is good. So that's about it. So if we could look into why Lakeside is flooding like this, that'd be great.
We'll look into that.
Thank you.
Randy Elman, 16603 Lowry Road. Sounds like they have some concerns about Mount Verde, but I just wanted to say thanks publicly to Paul. You know, I thought it was really good and came off representing the town really nice. I thought you did a good job. So did you, Mayor. So the only thing I wanted to comment on was welcome, you know, our new council members, and thank you for your service. And I ask that you all follow our charter. That, that would be the basic, that we have a charter. We just had a charter change. And, you know, I understand that unanimously, the residents voted for that charter change, which was a good thing. And what was it, Mayor? It was two houses per acre, right?
No, it, it'll, right now, we're two homes per acre gross, and to change any density at all, it'll take four out of five council people to agree with it.
Yeah. The only problem I have with that, and I've been dealing with that for, throughout most of my career, is I don't like the word gross.
Me neither.
You know, I don't like the word gross, and it's funny math to me and most of the residents, and people don't understand that. But, you know, we can get that later. But I just asked that, I noticed tonight that you all, in the oath that you took, was to follow the charter, to follow our charter. You took an oath to do that, so I would ask you to uphold that. Thank you so much.
Kelly Moore, 17029 Florenceview Drive, Mag Terrace. I want to follow up on a point he made. Now, I understand when the charter got changed, Osgood has already done business pretty much. But my question is, where are we in the planning and approval stage of the lots that Belliclina are putting in next to the Phase 1 of Mag Terrace? Is that be one of these situations where that's grandfathered, they're going to be net, it's going to end up being roughly a little bit bigger than a quarter acre? Or where is that at?
We're having a planned zoning tomorrow, aren't we? Yeah, come to the meeting tomorrow night, and it's going to be all about that.
Okay, so that's where, I can come tomorrow, but I'm trying to ask, right now, are they at a net situation where they're not following the charter currently, what they're proposing? Because that's what I gather.
I haven't seen anything.
You haven't seen a lot of sizes drawn up or any of that?
Not final, no. What they're asking for is, you know, something we can consider, but I don't know if I can even talk about it until they bring it, can I?
I think if the question is, will the new charter amendment apply to that project? Is that the question?
Well, that's, yeah, that's the question, because that, that project is not done. Osgood, I think, is kind of done.
Yeah, Osgood has already been developed.
But Belliclina is one where if the community wants roughly two homes per acre, we don't want to have it come out where, you know, we give them a carve-out, and then going forward, we'll follow the directions. I think that's where a lot of us are at right now.
From what I understand, they're asking for less than two homes per acre.
Just because they're asking for it, what he just said, we want you to follow it, and I want to echo that.
No, I'm saying the developer, from what I'm hearing through my, the grapevine, is asking for less than two homes per acre.
That's what the developer's asking for? But me, and what I understand the other gentleman said, is we would like you to stay closer to the two homes per acre, not give them a, what do we call that when we amend their...
You can't build more than two homes. You can't build more than two homes per acre.
No, not two, but they're going...
You can build less.
We want them to stay close to two homes per acre, not go to the lesser side. That's all.
Right, but what I'm saying is our, I understand our rules to say you can't build more than two, two homes per acre. So you can build less than two homes per acre.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks. All righty. Who else? Okay. Yes, sir.
Farmer Banks Helfrich, Clay Road District, South Lake County. Farm tip of the day, now's the time to put tomatoes into the ground, the quintessential fruit slash vegetables. A couple hacks with tomatoes. They do not like humidity, so the cool weather months are the best time to put them in the ground. The second thing is that tomatoes, as they are growing, and they have brown leaves on the bottom, clip them off, put them down, they will be good fertilizer for the actual tomato. The other thing is, there is Everglade tomatoes, which are indigenous up here from the Everglades. So grow those. They're small, yet they grow like weeds. Mayor, council, distinguished guests, I'd like to be the first one, Councilman Rubio to say, Councilman Rubio, welcome. Also, you can clap. Also, Councilman Roberts too, congratulations. Also, those who are veterans, today is Veterans Day. Thank you for your service. Thank you for fighting for our freedoms. Every single one of us are indebted to you. Mayor, what is the fundamental right of our constitutional republic, representative democracy? Is it the right to free speech? Is it the right to worship whoever we want to worship? Is it the right to vote? It is the right to vote, because without the right to vote, we have no representation, we have no vote, we have no representation, we have no voice, and we have no democracy. So how do we ensure to make sure that our democracy sustains itself? I am a sustainable farmer. I think of sustainability as we go forward. The first and foremost thing that we can do is we can encourage our fellow citizens, and we did that this last month in the election, to participate, to take ownership of our government. Two, we can also do what the Australians do, and that is find those who do not vote. In our country, we find those who do not pay their fair share of taxes. And I'm pretty sure everyone in here thinks that voting is more important than taxes. The third thing we can do is we can make voting a national holiday. The first Tuesday of November, we celebrate, we bring attention, awareness to the actual act of voting and engaging in our country. And then the last thing is, if someone says to you, I don't vote because it does not matter, you can agree with them. If they do not vote, it does not matter. It only matters if they vote. Lastly, I'd like to end with, and that is, we, we vote for our representation. A representation does not choose us. I am Farmer Banks Helfrich. May you all be blessed. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
I'm going to see if I can get through this tonight. I'm not feeling too well after having surgery two weeks ago. But, so, good evening, Mayor, member of council, Aaron Wadsworth, 17647 Knight Street. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'd like to propose an amendment to Article 2 of our town charter, addressing council terms, term limits, and election scheduling. Similar to what Groveland just passed, I have before you a draft of the amendment that I'm proposing, which would move our election cycle to every four years, or four-year terms instead of two-year terms, and also enact five-year or five-term limits for all roles. So establish a four-year term for both the mayor and council members. Limit any individual to five total terms of elected service, whether as mayor or council member, or in any combination thereof. If it was put on the amendment or ballot in November 2026 and passed, it would begin a transition schedule in 2027. So over a period of a couple of years, everybody would be on a four-year cycle, including the mayor and council, two seats, one year, two seats plus mayor, another year. The benefits to the town is continuity, longer staggered terms, ensure institutional knowledge is retained, while allowing town council members to see major projects and initiatives through to their completion, efficiency and cost savings. Moving from annual to biannual elections will significantly reduce the election preparation costs and the administrative burden, and accountability and modernization. Implementing clear term limits aligns, aligns Montverde with the growth, growing statewide and national trends toward responsible, citizen-focused governance. This amendment represents a thoughtful balance between stability and accountability, providing consistent leadership while ensuring regular opportunities for new voices to be served or to serve. I respectfully request the council to consider advancing this amendment for placement on the November 2026 ballot, ballot for voter approval, and I'd love to hear your thoughts on this amendment.
I like it. I think we need to do seats. Nobody should be up here more than 20 years. That, I mean, I'm being, right? That's the way I look at that.
I agree. Nobody should be up here more than 20 years.
Hundred percent.
I've provided a draft of the potential ordinance that Anita could review. It's very similar to what you used for Groveland, with obviously adjustments for five-year, five-term limits and four-year terms. And I've also provided a red-lined draft, or copy in blue and red, of our current charter and what those changes would look like for your review. Any questions on my thoughts?
Not yet, but I've come up with some.
You didn't add seats. I would have loved to seen that, seat, you know, one, two, three, four. That way, people are running for their seats as well, instead of going for the top two.
Can you hear him?
Yep.
Okay. I was saying that I would like to see actually seat numbers, you know, seat one, two, three, four, in addition to that as well. I support...
Yeah, so you'd be voting two people for, or you'd be voting potentially with two candidates for seat one, two candidates for seat two, versus top two to fill the two seats.
Correct, yeah. Not districts, I don't, I don't want to suggest districts.
Yeah, districts gets complicated in a city town.
We don't need that. But I think if we did seats, I like that idea as well. I could get behind that.
Any other thoughts or questions? Any other thoughts or questions?
Do you think they should bring out more candidates to run to anybody's offices?
I think that our town is evolving and growing, and there's been a long-term issue with not having enough candidates willing to come out, that obviously has changed in the recent couple of elections. Our population is also going to be growing significantly with Osgood, with the new Bella Colina developments, I think the more people that we have, the easier it will be to get enough candidates to actually run for various offices as they open up. If you read the provision, one thing that it does account for is anybody who's already been on council or held current terms, that does not count towards the five-year, five terms. So anybody currently seated or recently seated would still have five, four-year terms available to them after the election. But I'd love to come back next month and hear what some thoughts are about this.
Counsel, if it's something you're interested in, I could put it on a future workshop so we can discuss options, and that gives you time to think about it a little bit, and we can discuss it at an open meeting, if everybody's okay with that. Okay. Include it on a future workshop.
I did also want to take a minute to thank you guys for putting on Mont Verde's, it was a blast. I probably really overdid myself just coming out of surgery, was absolutely wiped out for two days afterwards, but it was a fun, a fun get-together, I know everybody worked really hard to put it together, a lot of volunteering happening, I tried to help out a few places where I could, but I was limited, looking forward to doing more volunteering work next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey Paul, real quick question in reference to that, we didn't get a consensus as far as number of seats go, I'd rather, if we can ask that, that way we don't waste your time.
I think that would be the purpose of the workshop, because we can talk over multiple options of what this would look like, that would give staff a little bit of time to create some options for you to look at, and you guys can also think about that, too, before we...
Yeah, Nina's got plenty of experience with this.
Yeah, then the workshop would go into a ordinance if you want to move forward with it.
All right, thank you very much. Come on up.
Hi, Kira Program, 16443 Magnolia Bluff Drive. Can you hear me? No, I'm trying to talk up. Okay, so first of all, thank you guys for running for council and for being here, and congratulations, I'm excited to have your ideas and thoughts and see where we go from here, so, thank you for that. I wanted to also kind of talk about Mont Verde, my daughter started her little small business four years ago at Mont Verde, and she's participated every year since then, making dog bandanas, this is the first year she was not invited, we didn't even know about it until like a couple of weeks before, and at that point she didn't have enough time to do it. Probably our fault, because we know when Mont Verde falls each year, but just kind of echoing what we've heard earlier is, there was no like formal invitation of vendors that had been there before, and I think that's an opportunity moving forward. Something that we've been talking about in our neighborhood is supporting the small businesses in town, we're losing them, and we have a lot of building going on, a lot of residents that are going to be coming in, so I'm wondering if there's any plans to host more events downtown, something more focused towards the businesses that are here, bringing, I don't know, walkabouts, I don't know what we could do as a town to try to support them better. I know there's been things on Facebook, like certain days to go down and support certain businesses, but just the thought there on things that we might be able to do, I know there was committees at one point that were talking about doing special events that, I can't remember what all the different committees were, but if there was an opportunity to do that, I'd be happy to volunteer and help out and try to figure out how to support these businesses a little bit better. As they come in, I would like to see them stay, so whatever we can do to bring those, bring more business downtown. One of the thoughts, too, is we used to have farmers markets, we don't have those anymore, I'm not sure what happened with that, but just more time to bring community together, so, that's all I got.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Mike Stone, 69 for seven, kind of playing off that a little bit, I had a lot of people that actually told me they really didn't see any advertising outside of the signs for Mont Verde Day, so if we could look into next year for when we do that, to make sure that the advertising's really bolstering, bolstered of it, I know, I think it was Ocoy Founder's Day or one of those other bigger events that was kind of on the same weekend, kind of fell through, and it's like, we should have probably got a lot of their traffic, but a lot of my friends that are in those areas and have different, you know, they're in different parts of town, really didn't see any, because, you know, you scroll through Facebook, you talk about it, you know, like, oh, all the targeted ads you get, I never once saw anything for Mont Verde Day, never once saw any of that, you know, so that was, that'd be one note I'd make. And then on what Aaron mentioned with the amendment there, I feel like having seat-specific positions for candidates would be pretty great. I tried to run this year, unfortunately that did not work out, but next year I do intend to run, and having specific seats would be actually helpful, because you're not pinning against four other people, and, you know, you're running for one specific thing, I think that would be beneficial for everybody involved, so, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Let's go ahead and keep it moving, oh, we got one more? Good. It's Santa Claus.
It's Santa Claus, and I don't know if they say the best for last or what, but a couple issues here, I had one, and the more you sit back there, you listen, it's like, I'm going to write some more stuff down here. Mont Verde, Paul did a great job, that was a, I told Paul, I said, did you hear the sound? And he goes, what? And I said, it's the sound of a baseball being hit out of the park, so, staff did a great job. Caroline, you guys did a great job participating. Today is Veterans Day, and I was brought to my attention, unfortunately, we see things, but we don't see things. One of the things that I've seen for years is one of our residents is a very honorable Army veteran. He is now handicapped, where he is relying solely for his transportation around town on a motorized wheelchair. It was shared with me at Election Day that the access he's off from Doris back in that area, in Franklin Pond, has a hard time because there's no access, there is access, but there's not access to the sidewalk that's on the northern side of our town property over here. I would, had shared with some of the on council about this and asked Paul about it, to look into, there's an asphalt section that's really tore up, that would make his and others a lot more accessible, instead of having to go around Lakeside with no sidewalk, because the sidewalk, which is parallel to Lakeside, is not accessible. Would also open up the ability for those who are on wheelchairs to, instead of having to go all the way around, or else going by the water plant, to come all the way around. I would also suggest maybe looking at the western side of our public works, where we have the fence to put a sidewalk that would connect Lakeside up to here, would cut down, make accessibility so much easier to the parks and everything else, instead of having to go all the way around to come to it. That was the first thing I wanted to suggest. I think we did really good, I noticed towards the end of Saturday night, that the robots that came out on stilts was really, the kids and everybody seemed to really love that, that was a great thing. It was suggested to me that we need a designated smoking area, because a lot of people were offended by cigarette smokes, and I don't know how, Nina, how that would fit out in a public area, but something to think about. Going forward, we talked about, Bob mentioned a sewer treatment plant, I thought we killed the one on, DEP killed the one up on Stetcher property, residents killed the one up on Ridgewood, and now we want to put one on Eighth Street, Ninth Street, which is like, to me, like class warfare, you didn't want it in your neighborhood, but you want to put it in somebody else's neighborhood, that's a travesty. I think something else that goes along with that, the price tag of a treatment plant, it sounds great to make the academy pay for it and open it up for businesses, but there's no way in the world that that'll generate the revenue to pay for one. So now this goes back to responsibility, the residents get stuck with this, those who aren't on it, because even with a long-term mortgage or buying from the state for our funds for this, the town, whole town of Mont Verde is now on the hook, whether it's a great thing or not, unfortunately, it goes back to, our commercial area is owned by entities, it's not owned, with the exception of Willie's and Karen's project, it's owned by corporations. And this is one thing that has destroyed our town. We saw cows go out because a group of investors own that property, they don't invest in it, and it's like slum corporates. You cannot force them to jump through hoops. If you want them to jump through hoops, buy their property, buy them out. Same situation over here with F&amp;M, same with Gigi's property over there, that's not owned by individuals, they lease those properties. So when we come around and we say, man, we need to do something to downtown, we need to do all this, it's kind of hard to, when we don't own the property. That's part of our capitalism, and those who have the right to invest, great. I think that that's a slippery slope that we don't need to go down, or we'll lose anyway in a court situation. How to address that? That's a good situation, I don't know the answer to it. That's why we have council meetings and public opinion on these things. You guys have done a great job, Ms. Carol, thank you for being our vice mayor again this year. Staff, you've done a great job, too. We look forward to 26, 27, and how things go out, but those are just a few suggestions and comments from the back row, so I'm enjoying the back row. Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Diane Inkblugger, 16506 Highland, I've lived here for 36 years now, I do not want sidewalks, I do not want golf carts, I do not want a downtown. If all these things are to happen, move to Winter Garden, move to a subdivision with sidewalks, I just don't, I moved out here to be in a rural area, and it's changing, and I know things change, but I'm not liking any of it, I don't want to see the changes. I know they're going to happen. One change I would like to see is a nativity at our Christmas celebration.
A what?
A nativity. For the children to see what Christmas...
Speaking of Michael.
A nativity at the Christmas program, at the Christmas celebration.
Oh, okay.
A nativity, you know, we have Santa, we have snowmen and Santa and Santa, we have no nativity. Why? Why can't we have a nativity?
I don't know.
Thank you.
Kelly Moore, 17029 Florence View Drive, Mag Terrace.
Please strike your out.
I know, but I can't let this sit when I hear that the residents killed the sewer on Lake Street. I think what actually happened was we had a conflict of interest when it was on Stetcher property, and people owned property across from it and told me they did not. That's one thing, yep, that's not true, sir. Now, one of the things we've never heard through this whole process is that that was going to cause the town, each resident, $10,000 to $20,000 to remove the septic tank to hook up to the sewer when the grant came first, the first time. So I think the town, at some point, would like, we would like to hear an apology, when that grant came through the first time, that we were told, it's going to be a free hookup, it's going to solve all our problems, and then a couple of years into it, we find out, no, actually, it's not a free hookup, it's going to cost each member $10,000 to $20,000, that's what the mayor told me, and we all found out about that in eleventh hour. And now we're here on the precipice of doing stormwater, and I'm hearing a gentleman here, I don't know you, Mike, but that the recent pavement of Lakeside has caused your business to almost flood, and so I'm looking at the track record of how that engineering feat happened and put you at a point. So, again, I don't want to hear that it was the residents to kill this sewer idea. Now, the residents actually got common sense, because we weren't going to be on the hook for $10,000 to $20,000 a person, and I don't think that's been aired out in public, so, and we've never heard an apology, because it took quite a lot to remove a few people from council with voting, that were all in to put that sewer right in the middle of town. And I think that that's, you know, we want to move on, but you stood up here and said that the residents killed it, we killed it for good reason. Okay? Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, okay, let's move on. Let's go, let me do the town manager's report next.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, I know we have a lot of questions tonight, on some of the questions, I'll follow up with a memo to council and have it in the next packet, and a couple of the things, sounds like, will be appropriate for a workshop, so I'll get them on a future workshop to discuss. I want to start off by, thank you all, thank you to the staff and all of our volunteers that helped with Mont Verde, I know it was a lot of work, we had a small group of people that did a whole lot of work, and I really appreciate them for all the work they did. The, we did receive a bid for Porter and First Street for that next storm and street project, the bids range from the low bid, which is $797, up to about $1,004, so they are currently reviewing all the credentials of the contractor, and that bid package will come before you at a future meeting for consideration. We did receive that mini grant we talked about a couple of months ago at a meeting for the irrigation controllers, that St. John's Water Authority is telling us to do, so that grant did come through, so we'll probably set some type of program up in the spring to figure out how we're going to distribute those or get those installed for those advanced irrigation controllers to comply with St. John's CUP request. On Lakeside, we are currently waiting for as-built and working through the punch list, you know, obviously Mr. Stone made us aware of the program, or the problem over there, so we do have the engineers looking into it, once we get the as-bills, we'll see if there's something that needs to be corrected over there moving forward, which sounds like there does need to be. Light Up Mont Verde is December 6, and just want to remind everybody to come out for At the last meeting, the council gave me direction to reach out to Lake County to ask about golf carts, if they would be allowed on Ridgewood and Fosgate, I did have a meeting with the county manager regarding that, she's going to meet with her public works team and get us an answer back, and once we do that, then I'll put that back on the agenda for her to consider if you want to do that, depending on what their answer is. She did apologize, it may take a little bit longer with that, both in Franklin Pond, with the extreme storm that hit the area, they're scrambling to deal with Mount Door issues in Eustis areas with the flooding and the public works on their end. And finally, in your book, you have your grant tracking sheet, that's available under the town manager report, so please take a look at that, if you have any questions, of course, contact me about that. Also, our highway patrol numbers for our patrols for this month are included in there for you to look at.
Can you please break this up going forward? I'd like to see the officers.
What's that?
A breakdown of each officer, you keep combining them, but I'd like to see a breakdown.
Yeah, I will, I will get what they need to confer on that, I won't promise that at this point, but I'll...
You can black out the names of the officers if you like, to make it so it is private, I'm fine with protecting the privacy of them, but I'd like to see them.
Okay, I'll confer and get back with you on that. Lake County Fire and Rescue, tap to the numbers there. And also, I included the impact fee summary sheet that was requested at the last meeting, and that shows you where we're, so you can track the impact fees, where we're at with those. Then, next up is our capital projects. So starting with the, as you know, the library is close to being done, we still have some more file cabinets that are being finalized by our cabinet maker, and there's a few more shelves that'll go in, so we're about at a 98% on the library, most of the stuff is just minor stuff we're waiting on. Emergency generator, we're waiting on DEP approval for that, for the library. The outdoor park bathroom, I believe is about 98% done, we have a little bit of landscaping to do around it, so they were open for Mont Verde, we got the septic in literally the week before Mont Verde, and got everything taken care of that. And the small water storage tank, the building is done for the pump house, Duke Energy has marked the electric for that pump house, and the next couple of weeks, the contractors are supposed to be back in to install the pumps and finish up that water tank on the back of that. Community building, no activity on that. Fire station, Lake County, they were issued a site grading permit, and they've done most of the site grading. of the site grading out there. And I don't have any updates on actual, when the concrete will be bored in, we'll start going vertical on that. Nothing new on Kirk Playground. Ridgewood Avenue, ADA, we're actually going to move that over to complete it. Lakeside Avenue Storm Project, we're in punch list time and also waiting for as-bills to finish up the punch list and then do a final review with that. Porter and First Street Storm Project, as I mentioned, we received the bid. We're going through that contract. That is, if you, likely will approve that at the December meeting or consider it for approval at the December meeting. And that will start toward probably the 1st of January sometime. Boat and Storm Project, the county has started on the tower at Ferndale. So they're going to be staging out there occasionally and utilizing that boat ramp. There'll be some temporary closures of the boat ramps when they build the barges and have to do the loads to go out there. Truskip Park, Dock and Storm and FEMA. Sandy has been working with FEMA. We submitted a engineer's cost estimate to fix the boat dock that goes out there. They provided us one that was like $10,000, and we provided one that was 3/4 of a million. So now they're trying to rectify those two. So obviously, theirs was very off on our opinion. 455 Storm and Street Sewell Project, you'll hear a concept plan tonight. Same with 8, 9th and Temple. Well, number one generator, we did get federal approval. We're waiting for the state approval. Then hopefully, we'll have the funds and we can put that out to bid. That's for water plant number one to replace their generator. Same with elevated water storage tank, we're just waiting on DEP approval, as well as for the Florida redundant upper well and the new lower Floridian well. Consumptive use permit, we submitted everything into DEP. This is for our 20-year consumptive use permit for our water. We had a project manager change, and they actually request that we put in for an extension so they can get caught up on the file. So we were granted an extension on that for a few more months while they get caught up on that. But we're pretty close to finishing that. I'm sure I'm probably on the other one there. Sorry. And water, same thing with water line, we're working through the engineering on the water upsized lines. And that's all I have to report on the capital improvement programs.
I have a quick question in reference to the community building. Did you get a chance to look at that grant information I had sent to you, by any chance? I know you were busy with Mont Verde, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, I did take a look at it. I forgot the actual name of the grant. It seems like that grant program just has some income-related things on it. Pretty well, what I need to do is, we'll revisit it at a workshop and get some direction from council where we want to go with that. Then we can examine if there's any funding out there to do that or not. But yes, I did look through it. I didn't detail to go through it and get to, but it could be a possibility.
Just so councils, where I sent Paul some information on two grants to potentially pay for repairing the community building. So that's what that...
The community building?
Yes.
All righty. Let's go ahead to our Lake County Commissioner.
Sorry, Doug.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Put your attorney first.
Oh, yeah, she's on the bottom over here. Our attorney first.
I don't have anything, thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, our town planner.
Okay. So, reporting as your planner, we've had a pretty typical number of permits that we continue to get, zoning clearance requests. We're about a month into the office hours now regularly on Wednesdays, and they seem to be going well. So just happy to serve. We'll have some, another round of some code changes in the new year that'll come up. They'll go to P and Z first, and then they'll come to you.
Is that a good idea, the Wednesday thing? You like it?
We think it's good. We're getting a lot of good questions there.
Think it's smoother?
Yes. Lisa and Patty are doing a great job.
Yeah, good. Lisa's doing a good job, too.
Thank you. So I'll now report as your commissioner. Just want to obviously take this opportunity to congratulate council member Rubio, council member Robertson, Mayor, on your reelection. Certainly look forward to working with you. And want to thank all the veterans as well. I know that's been said tonight, but we can't say it enough. So thank you to all the veterans that sacrificed and give of your time for this great nation. So...
They can't hear you.
They can't... Oh, do I have to repeat all that? Okay. Well, it's worth, I can repeat the veterans' part for sure. So thank you to all the veterans. It can't be said enough today especially. So thank you all for your service and making the sacrifice for all of us. And lastly, I think council member, former council member Alan Hartle is in the audience, so I do want to thank you for your service as well. Thank you. And that's all I have to report.
All right. Thank you very much. And let's see, we'll go on to the council. Carol, do you have anything?
Yeah, I will echo, let's try this again. I will echo the same sentiments for Mont Verde.
Can you pull that mic up to you?
I will echo the same sentiments for Mont Verde. The incident with the vendor with the sponsorship, I'm sorry that that occurred. But overall, the actual event itself, I think, was well-planned and went off very well. The raffle prizes, of course, everybody stayed till the end waiting for the raffle prizes. So you can count on that. There, I believe that our security team may have written up once or twice a house on Four Lakes and Alpha or possibly Omega. It's not the house or the yard that concerns me. It's the open pool with the screen enclosure that is falling in. So again, I think that's been written up from the security team, so I'm just putting a little more push to see if there's something that we can send a notice to the property owner or whatever the course of action would be there. Based on some of the comments that I heard tonight, one of the first things I thought of in terms of residents' participation, what we can do to help downtown. Any feeling towards have a cleanup or something day downtown to residents come out and we provide the labor? If the business owners can give some direction or, I mean, I really have no idea how it works. It's a thought that just came to mind. But if there's an interest in that, that could be something that we could follow up on. And then the last thing I'll ask Paul is if you have, Ann or Sean, an update on the Franklin Pond. I know we were waiting for some action coming from the county.
I'll field this one. We are, we're behind. The county has not come out yet. Paul and I have talked about this, but rest assured, I'm on it tomorrow to make sure they come out. They have been a little busy, but everything's going on. But still, they should have been out by now, so we'll take care of it.
And I know we got with Mont Verde and all of that. So, you know, I'll start pushing a little harder now that we're on the downhill side.
And you can help me push. We'll get them out here, so.
Got you covered.
Yeah.
Thank you. And that's it for me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Joe, do you have anything?
I also would like to thank, I'd also like to thank all the veterans for their sacrifice. Also, congratulations to the... We really need to invest in something for this audio. This is horrible.
Bullhorns.
That's what we need. Bullhorns, exactly. Congratulations to the two of you. Let's see, I have a lot here tonight. Brian, looking at your suit tonight, I'm going to probably need to rent a tux for the next one. Up my game a little bit here. Congratulations, or, I shouldn't, congratulations. Thanks to the sponsors for Mont Verde as well. I'd like to thank them, our staff, volunteers for making it fun and successful. Aaron, thank you for heckling me. Say that one up there, too. So I have a couple of things to follow up on what happened. Kelly, to answer your question, is he still here? He looks like, where's he? Oh, he's over there. I'll always follow the charter, just so it's clear. Should go down some of these lists. I'd like to, I would like to hear more as far as what Mike Stone had brought up in reference to the water situation, because there's definitely a problem, because he was walking around in four inches of water around his home that was washing out the side of his foundation. So that's definitely something that cannot really, that's more of an emergency. Oh, he's working on the mic, so. All right. I'll come back during my discussion. At the end of the meeting, I'll finish up.
All righty. Do you have anything?
Yeah, Sean. Sean, I know you mentioned some code changes. Something that someone brought up to me while I was campaigning that I thought was interesting was that the setbacks for a fence or a shed are 50 feet from wetland, but a pool is 25. Is that something we could look at? I mean, there's, it just seems unreasonable to keep a fence 50 feet from a wetland, but you're allowing pools to be that close.
If that's what the town wants to look at, that kind of a code change, we can certainly look at that. The, there's, I know. I'm trying not, when I get too close, I'm worried it's going to make that feedback again. So, all right. So the short answer is, we can look at whatever you want for things like that. We'll give you the pros and cons of changing setbacks and the reasons why you do some setbacks and the reasons why you don't.
Understood.
Absolutely, we can look at that.
Got you.
Yeah.
And then Anita, my other question would be, what were the proposed, I know there was like seven different propositions for the property tax. Do you have any idea what those were or what that's looking like?
I can give you a summary.
Pay attention to this, because this is going to be something you guys are going to deal with in the next year, the property tax, homestead tax cuts that they want to do in Tallahassee. And the whole time you're hearing about them, say, "Well, how are they going to replace that?"
Okay, there, one proposal is complete elimination of, except for the non-school. So you would still pay property tax on the school portion, but otherwise, it would eliminate property taxes on homestead property outright. Another proposal was a phase-out of property taxes over a 10-year period by adding a new $100,000 exemption each year to a homeowner's non-school tax base. Then there were proposed new exemptions. So it would exempt Florida residents over 65 from paying non-school homestead property taxes. Another new exemption would be creating a new homestead exemption equal to 25% of a home's assessed value. Another proposal would establish a property insurance relief homestead exemption by granting an additional $100,000 non-school exemption to homeowners who maintain property insurance on their homestead. There's a proposal for expanded benefits, which would eliminate the cap on the Save Our Homes portability benefits. And it would allow homeowners to transfer their accumulated Save Our Homes differential to a new residence, even when the replacement home is of lesser value. Valuation assessments, there's a couple of proposals under that category. This would, it says it slows the growth in the assessed value of non-school homestead property taxes to 3% over three years for homestead property. Currently, they can increase it 3% per year. And it would provide for 15% over a three-year period for non-homestead property. Currently, they can increase it 10% per year. So it would limit it to 15% over a three-year period. Another proposal is to make statutory changes, including requiring a 2/3 vote to increase millage rates and allowing newly married couples to merge their accumulated Save Our Home benefits when establishing a shared household. So those are the proposals that were talked about recently. And we'll just have to see, there's, the League of Cities is going to be hosting a two-part webinar on it, I think, November 17th and December 8th, to talk about some of the legislative items. So I'll keep you updated as things change.
You can send us an email with that time. That'd be perfect.
Okay.
That's it.
All righty. Thank you. Brian?
Oh, I have a few things. So first and foremost, I want to obviously echo, our veterans are obviously important. Our nation is free because of veterans, obviously past and present. On that subject, I do want to see if we could possibly bring back the veteran parking that we used to have. I don't know if that's a possibility. I don't know.
Didn't we just do that? No, the hospitality. I thought we did it.
It's not out there.
Oh, that's the handicap that you did. Oh, okay, yeah. Yeah, we need to fix that.
Yes. I don't want whatever... I will talk for a little while. I will talk for a little while.
Yes, we just put up the handicap signs and got those done. And I believe in that last order I did with those new poles, I have some new veteran signs to go up to. So we'll get those back up.
I'll take Mike's right hand, by the way. I'll talk loud enough. So I want to echo a few things the residents brought up, the library hours. I think definitely we'll get much use out of what...
Mike, is it on your phone? We can't, we can't hear unless you're...
There you go. I was trying to...
So I was saying, I would like to echo a few things the residents brought up, the library hours. I think definitely a Saturday will, you know, will actually give a lot of use to the library. I find myself that, you know, after school, it's, you know, kind of hard to go anywhere. And obviously, if you have a closer library, it's obviously better to use on the Saturday than driving, obviously, on Hancock. Again, to the term limits, I agree 100%. I actually brought that up earlier in the year in regards to term limits. I do believe, you know, we should definitely look into that at a minimum. And I guess, last but not least, I am happy to be here. I'm happy to serve the residents. I'm happy to serve the town of Mont Verde. And honestly, I'm looking forward to the next few years. So, but that's all I got.
All right. Thank you very much. All righty. I'll do something real quick. First, I want to say, I counted 50 people in here when you guys all sat down. And I'm here to tell you that I love it. I love it. Come to every meeting, get involved, stand up. You have every right to stand up and talk to us. And if you don't think we're listening, then just keep coming back. That works. Okay? If you really want something. Thank you for coming. I want to say thank you and congratulations. I appreciate everything about you, and you're going to help us get through all the things we need to. I want to thank the 82.8% of the residents that came out to vote this past midterm, I'm not even midterm, off-election, which is never heard of in Mont Verde. I also want to ask about the Ferndale Septic Company. Has the county done anything with that yet?
The last I checked, the county was still waiting to receive comments back from the applicant. And we have not received any further items to review, but I'll follow up for the next meeting.
Okay. And we're just, when they're going to deal with that, we're going to go to that?
Yes. If it goes forward to public hearing, we will go.
Okay. I'm happy to go, too. Just let me know.
Okay. Yeah, we'll let the council know if anybody wants to attend.
What that is, is in our ISP edit, we put there, as an agreement with everybody, Claremont, Mineola, Mont Verde, Belliclina, and Lake County, it, you cannot build anything on less than five acres. And this is commercial property, so it's even worse. So we don't want to set a precedent by letting somebody build something now. So our attorney's taking care of that, and I appreciate it. And what else I got? That's it. Let's go ahead and move on to October finance report. See, they need to get these mics right here. Okay. We began with $3,942,700... Okay, we began with 3 million, 3,942,7897, we ended up with 4,401,783. And I'm gonna go to the consent agenda, which has minutes for town council meeting held August 19th, and minutes for town council, special council meeting August 26th. Need a motion or need something that, something wrong with the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Okay, I got a motion to accept the consent agenda the way it is, minutes. Need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Against, say nay. Okay, ayes have it. Let's go on to our discussion items, and the first one is presentation by McDermott Davis, and this is our final audit for 2425. And what this is, is every year we get audited, and we ask the auditor to come in and speak to the council about the audit.
Good evening, council.
Uh-oh.
Alright, no.
Yeah.
Barely. Hello? Good evening, I'm here to present the report, the 2024 annual audit report. The town received an unmodified audit opinion, and that's the best type of opinion that you can receive. The town was also in compliance with all of the statutes we tested. This year, the town did have a federal single audit related to the ARPA funds, the ARPA grant that was recognized during the year. So that involves some additional compliance testing, making sure that those grant expenditures were in compliance with the ARPA agreement, and everything we tested was in compliance. A few highlights of the general fund, first looking at the town as a whole. The net position increased 3.4 million to 12.5 million. The general fund had an increase in, or a decrease of 276,000. Unassigned fund balance was 1.4 million, and restricted fund balance was 1.2 million. Although there was a decrease in general fund balance, that ending unassigned net position of 32% of expenditures is within your expected and GFOA guidelines. The general fund, both revenues and expenditures were under budget, and that was mostly due to the timing of grant revenue, so you didn't recognize grant revenue, so corresponding, there was not expenditures recognized related to that grant. Kind of graphically, looking at the trend of revenues and expenditures over time. Increases in revenues in the general fund primarily relate to grant revenues, including the library, as well as charges for services for permanent costs, and some increases in tax revenues, mostly related to increases in property values. Fund balance has remained relatively consistent over the past five years, and of note, that unassigned, so that green portion at the bottom, is what can be spent at councils' discretion. There are no internal or external restrictions on those funds, whereas the restricted, so the blue balance, which is another large portion, is restricted, so that might be grant money, impact fee money, has to be spent for specific purposes. For the ARPA fund, as I mentioned, you did recognize that large chunk, 1.8 million, and at the end of 2024, there was 3.8 million of ARPA funds left. That does include the portion that was returned to the county shortly after fiscal year end. So trend-wise, looking at those revenues and expenditures, the big spike this past year was recognizing the ARPA funds, mostly for the library, some of the infrastructure projects within the utility fund as well. So we can see the ARPA funds unspent, you had a large spike in 2022 and 2023. That was the receipt of that county money, and spending a lot of it down in 2024, knowing that those funds need to be spent at the end of 2026. The utility fund net position increased 2 million, mostly due to grant revenues. Unrestricted net position was 1.7 million, and restricted was 138,000. Looking at the trend of utility revenues and expenditures, here you can see that revenues exceed expenditures. One thing to note on the utility fund is all of your purchases and the money spent on capital assets are not included in expenditures, they're capitalized as assets in the fund. So a better representation is net position, where here in the utility fund, your largest portion of net position is the amount invested in capital assets, so that's your water lines and infrastructure there, so that's not liquid assets available to spend. You have been able to increase the unrestricted net position, so that's some money set aside for future repairs and replacement as well in the waterfront. We did have one recommendation, and it's been a repeat comment, it's common, it's common in smaller entities, just the lack of expertise over financial, high-level governmental accounting. Smaller governments, it's not cost benefit to hire CPA to have on staff as a finance director. We just continue to encourage staff to maintain additional training, learn a little bit more of the governmental side of things, so we can limit the number of audit adjustments we have to post as part of our audit. And if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to address them.
I had one question on page nine in here. It talks about, it says during the year, actual revenues were 2 million less than budgeted revenues. Was that due to, was this, that little paragraph there, is that due?
On the slide?
No. No, of the.
On the actual.
Yeah, on the actual, on the actual one, yeah. I'm just curious if that was related to the grants as well.
Where the general fund was less than, but yes, that's the same kind of thinking, is you budgeted, extra money was going to come in, and you were budgeting to spend that money. The timing of that grant, and it was primarily grant-related, so you didn't spend, there were less expenditures, you didn't spend the money because you didn't get that money in.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tammy, appreciate it.
Alrighty, just keep it moving. The compliance audit by the Department of Management Services, Division of Retirement.
That would be me, sorry. So I did a summary along with the audit report in that. We were randomly selected for an FRS audit this year. As you can tell, everything in the audit came out very well, with the exception, there was a a reporting error that was made where the salary, which was my salary, our finance director times it by, divided by 25 instead of 26, so we corrected that error, and now everything is in full compliance. And please note that 226 is just a reporting error. I do, I do not have anything paid in, or the town does not pay anything into the FRS for me, but we do have to report my salary to FRS. So that's all I have, and, and I apologize, Mayor, we do need to back up one, and we need to have a motion to accept the audit findings from McDormand, and we also need to accept this audit finding as well.
Okay.
I had a question about FRS before we jump back.
Sure.
Had we made changes so that that kind of a misclassification doesn't happen again going forward?
Yep, the adjustment was made, correct.
So we need to approve the audit?
Yes, I'll have.
If you could do a motion to accept the audit.
Accept the audit. Okay, I make a motion to accept the audit. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, say nay.
And we also need one for the FRS audit.
Okay, make a motion to accept the FRS audit.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Against, say nay. Ayes have it. Alright, let's move on to C.
The final audit, we, we've been hit with audits. We had our normal audit this year, we had a single audit for ARPA, we had the FRS audit, and we also had DEP give us an audit for our MS4 system. And when this says sewer, this is storm sewer system. So a field audit was conducted along with a paper audit of the town of its MPDS permit, and as you can tell in the findings, we complied with all the, with the department's rules and regulations, so we had a clean finding from them, and again, would need a motion to accept this one as well, please.
Alrighty, do we need to, okay, I make a motion that we accept the Department of Environmental Protection audit?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, say nay. Ayes have it. Move on to the Resolution Number 2025-195, if you would, please.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Montverde, Florida, relating to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, FDEP State Revolving Fund, SRF, adopting the Town of Montverde Stormwater Facilities Plan dated September 2025 for the implementation of stormwater improvements, authorizing the town manager to implement the stormwater improvements, providing an effective date.
Alrighty, you want to get up here and explain it to us?
Did you have anything you wanted to introduce first, Paul?
Yeah, sure. Welcome, Scott, I appreciate you coming in, and just so the council are already looking at the facility plan. This is the early, what we would call a concept facility plan, mainly with the goal of showing where the water, how we're gonna handle the water, and also create three different scenarios, which is required under the SRF program. So we, we know there are some areas where it shows, some driveways are where they can't turn into a driveway. That all gets cleaned up in engineering, the, the goal of this is to show where the water goes, and I'll go ahead and have you hand you the clicker, just the right click there. And Scott will go a little bit more into that in, in detail, again, just think of concept as we look at this.
Thanks, Paul. So good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council and staff. I'm Scott Shannon with Woodard and Curran. So in February of 2024, so a little over a year and a half ago, the town was awarded a $19.8 million grant from DEP's Clean Water Program. It came from a, a special appropriation for Hurricanes Fiona and Ian, which was special in, in the fact that unlike the regular SRF program, it was entirely principal forgiveness to the town. So as you will recall, last year, we, we were pursuing a wastewater project utilizing that funding, and then when the town elected not to move forward with that project at the end of 2024, we were directed and successfully had that money re-appropriated for use during, for stormwater. Clean water and wastewater are all part of the, I'm sorry, wastewater and stormwater are all part of FDEP's Clean Water Program. The, the objective being that both those types of projects help to, help to clean up the water before it gets released back into the nature and the environment.
Wait a minute, so you're saying if, whether I put a sewer in, plant, or I use stormwater, the objective is to clean Lake Apaca and Lake Florence and keep them clean?
That is the objective behind the program that DEP administers, yes. So the, the town, it was the early part of last year that, when the money was re-appropriated, the town executed an amended grant agreement to be utilized towards stormwater, and the first step in that process was to do a facilities plan. The purpose of the facilities plan was to identify conceptually what would be done with, with the grant money, and the primary objectives of that plan were to, were to basically identify what are the areas that will be improved, what are the, the, what are the details of, of the improvements? At least to the extent that we can identify a, a rough cost compared to what the grant proceeds are. We have to look at some alternative ways of achieving those improvements, you know, ultimately characterize the cost and the impact to the town, and then ultimately present that as part of public participation. So the, this, this objective tonight, this agenda item tonight, is to satisfy the public participation portion of the, of the facilities plan. So with me tonight is Amanda Boone, our project manager. She's gonna go through the details of the plans themselves, but before we get to that, just, just an agenda for what this presentation is. Again, we're gonna go through in detail, a little bit of detail, the, the areas that we're looking to be improved, that are proposed to be improved under this grant program. We'll talk a little bit about the, the alternatives that we evaluated, the ones that we settled up on, what the, what the capital costs are, the long-term financial impacts, which is pretty easy when it's all grant, and then the schedule for, schedule for moving forward with the project. You all, you all will have to take public, public comments and then discussion, and ultimately decide whether you want to adopt the plan or not. So at that point, at this point, I'll turn it over to Amanda, she can go through the proposed improvements.
Thank you very much. As you said, my name is Amanda Boone. I'm the project manager with Woodard and Curran on this project. And here we are seeing the various project area locations that were looked at as part of this facility plan. So they really span a good portion of the town, and we'll look at each one of those just a little bit further. As have been mentioned, we are required to look at different alternatives for each one of these project locations. In totality, you look at three different alternatives is the requirement, with one of those being a do-nothing. So you end up with an alternative two and an alternative three. In this table, we've given kind of a brief location description, as well as what each one of those alternatives are. With each of these, the goal is to capture and convey that stormwater, and in most situations, we're providing some water quality treatment as well. So we do have a location that is Hickory Avenue, 8th Street, and Neil Drive. Here, we're looking at a treatment swale primarily as the solution. On Scott Lane, we shift to more of a curb inlet and tree box scenario. At the kind of entrance of Lake Florence Park, and again, I'll show some sketches of these areas in a minute, we have a conveyance system that then terminates with a nutrient-separating baffle box before entering the lake. We do have some plans for Truskett Park. This one is probably one of them that is appearing in multiple plans that you're looking at right now, but we want to make sure that we're including it here just to capitalize on any potential funding. In that situation, we have underground storage chambers, a rain, and a rain garden. For 7th Street, we're looking at a swale with a storm drain and pipe network. Same goes for County Road 455, and this is where you'll see some of that occurring in a median area. And I do want to remind, as you've heard, these are what I would call napkin sketches. So the details of where openings will be positioned will be discussed and designed more further later. At the Montverde Academy site, we have a change to the retention basin, as well as some additional storm piping. For Kirkland Road, we have a treatment swale, as well as at Highland Avenue and Lake Street. So at Hickory Avenue, 8th Street, and Neil Drive, you'll see that conceptual storm drain pipe network terminating into Sawgrass Pond. On Scott Lane, we have not the treatment swales here, but much more of a usual storm drain collection system, and some of those will have tree boxes associated with them. At Lake Florence, capturing some of that stormwater within the roadway, having it go through a nutrient-separating baffle box before it's discharged into Lake Florence. Truskett Park, we see in the aqua color, the underground detention area, and in kind of the purple of bio-retention, like I said, of all the sites, this one probably has a lot of flux to it right now, because it's being looked at in several different projects under several different funding scenarios. 7th Street is one of the roads here, you'll see, these are a little difficult to see, because it is a very linear project, but we are utilizing swales on either side, as well as in the median, to provide that conveyance and some treatment, and supplementing that with traditional storm pipe and inlets. County Road 455 is much the same as 7th Street, and it is also looking at that same sort of conveyance situation. Montverde Academy, this project is looking to open up the area that is actually currently the pond on the right-hand side, kind of outlined in red. It would eliminate that pond there, and through the enlargement of the pond in blue and green, we would not only replace that pond, but also provide some additional treatment area and detention for this location. and detention for this location. Kirkland Road, 9th Street and 8th Street, here we see some swales coming back in on either side and supplementing that with a storm inlet and drain system. And Highland Avenue, here are the extents of this project area. And I believe this is the last one at Lake Street, and here we are having treatment swales as well. So the summary of cost, again, the selected alternative was alternative two. The total capital project cost that is estimated at this time is over $21 million. That will get refined further as we go through design, and project areas may flux in and out to stay within the grant dollars. Again, this is grant-funded, so no expected impact to the ratepayers. Our project schedule, we are looking to submit this to FDP, pending your approval, and hoping to receive approval back from FDP in February, with final design to FDP occurring in November of 2026. That is a very brief and short and aggressive schedule to get the final design to them. In December, hopefully, they will get to, back to us on that approval so that we can then get construction underway in February of 2027 and complete in May of 2028. And with that, we are ready for any public comments and your discussion. Thank you.
Can you, can you tell me again, on 7th Street, which is 455, going through town, going towards Ferndale, and the section in the middle of the road, you're saying that's going to be changed later?
What I'm wanting to, wanting you to understand is that in the median there, it is designed to be a treatment swale, so essentially a depressed median. What has not been ironed out is where it starts and stops. So you may have a section that is very short to have an opening. You have to really look at those openings and plan those out during design in regards to maintenance of traffic.
So you're saying the road would go like inverted?
The road itself, you, and I apologize, I don't have the cross-section, but it is anticipated that each side of the roadway would have a normal crown, so it would slope both to one side and the median, and the other side would slope both to the median and the opposite side. So you would have some, some of your lane that would go towards the middle and the other part of the lane going to the outside. That's why you have three swales on either side of each of the two-lane directions.
Isn't that an old Grove Road? Same thing, they used to build, when the middle of the road would be like that? So you're saying the middle road's going to be like this, and it's going to go like that?
Not in traffic itself. It is not a reverse crown within the paved area. It would become divided.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is, I'm not real clear on it, so I don't know if I would want to approve the, move forward with it. Is there going to be something in the middle of the road that's going to block traffic from going from one side to the other?
In places, yes. We have to plan where those openings are, and those have not been teased out yet.
So we'd be approving what? I don't really understand.
I guess the question is from, you know, there's obviously with the plan, the concept plan, there's people's driveways blocked, and we, we obviously can't block people's driveways, or we're going to be able to work through those.
Yes, you are able to make design changes to this. This is not set in stone, okay? I don't even believe we would be in violation of the SRF plan approval if we were to go away from having anything in the center and going to having something just on the outside. That's not even out of the realm of possibility yet either. This is very conceptual, and you are not locked into what you were seeing on the screen, and I suspect the design will change, especially on these two roadway sections.
So, so what are we approving tonight?
What you are approving is a concept that's saying, yes, in these project area locations, we think this generally seems like a good idea. We want to do additional capture, conveyance, and treatment of our stormwater.
Don't we need resident discussion? I mean, residents.
No, we'll open up to the public in a little bit.
There are cross-sections in the packet. There are the cross-sections to show which way the, the road is going to be shaped.
We're not, we're not ready for comments. What were you saying? I'm sorry. What pages are?
Just to emphasize, this is conceptual.
You're saying on the back?
Yeah, yeah, it shows which, what the potential idea would be for that.
This, this is a conceptual, so every image that we're looking at is up to change, correct? Or open to change?
That is correct. Let me, let me see if I can clarify this a little bit. The, the funding is, the driver for the funding is for the water quality benefit. And so, so a water quality benefit requires for, for a, for a certain area, a certain, a certain area of treatment. Where that treatment occurs, whether it's in a center median or it's in swales on the side, is inconsequential to the concept right now because it, it really is simply just a budget and a, and a project boundary in, inside of which we are attempting to provide water quality improvement. So anything related to the roadway and, and the impervious surfaces, as long as we're not increasing, as long as we're not increasing that, or that we make up for it somewhere else, we can change within the, within the, within the design. So essentially, what you're, what you're approving tonight is, these are the areas we want, this is what we intend to do with the budget dollars, and to move forward with design to, to come up with exactly what it is the town wants.
How did you come up with the areas? How did we come up with the areas?
We, we had a workshop here where we talked, we went through all the area. We had a workshop where we went through all the areas with the council. It was a while ago, I know it was a while ago.
Yeah, it would have been during the development of the plan, so.
Actually, I want to say it might have been in December, or, no, February or February.
Yeah, yeah.
And just a quick question, did you list three alternatives? Or I guess, in this particular illustration, they're all listed as alternative two. The biggest difference being a 60-foot row, 65, or a varium? What's, the illustrations are all the same, what's the difference between them?
That's just capturing that that roadway has a varying width, and what would that cross-section look like as the width varied?
All right, so the actual cross-section may look a little different, but the, at least by these diagrams, the overall width doesn't change based on the images that we've seen here, right?
We're not changing it, we just have to work the design within the changing width that exists today.
Gotcha, yep.
And, and it's really the right-of-way width that I believe varies the most. The alternative we did not show, because it's not the selected alternative, was actually a chicane. So in other words, the roadway would change in geometry significantly and would actually meander. And that was, that was not a selected alternative due to cost.
That is a good way to do it, though.
So going back to seven, to 455, and coming out of town, going towards Ferndale, the railroad is on the north side, so when it makes, when I, there's utilities involved, a lot of utilities, there's poles, you know, telephone poles. I'm not sure if the water's on the south side.
Crisscross.
I believe it's on the south side, right?
Yeah, crisscrosses halfway through, the big line, the 10-inch.
Going up the hill, comes over here. So, so obviously, there's going to be utilities to get moved, whether it's telephone poles or water lines, correct?
Well, that is a to-be-determined as well. We could tweak the design so that, such that we minimize those utility conflicts and relocations.
And if, if council recalls, we, we went through the same scenario with the water tank, where they brought us three alternatives, one to do nothing, one to build a four-legged tower, and I think one was to build a one-legged tower of ground storage. And you start off with this planning study, then from this planning study, they're going to obviously get some feedback from you and continue to get feedback. Then we bring in an initial design concept, once they do the engineering, actually start looking hard at utilities, where things are at, where the road can actually go. We have to coordinate with Lake County because we may say we want this, and they may say no, so there's a lot of coordination in that. So basically, we'll develop like a 15 to 20% more detailed concept of what this will look like, then we'll get your input on that, then the plans will go to 65%. And when the plans are 65%, just like we did with the water tank, it comes back to the council. That's basically the final plans with all the engineering details, then we go to 100% set. So this, as she said, on the, on the napkin, we'll go into like a, a more formal look proposal at the next stage than to a final proposal stage that you'll see it, then it'll go out the bit after that, then you'll have the final review. So there are a lot more steps involved.
I understand, I'm just making sure, we're starting at ground zero right now, and the first 20%, I want to make sure that's right, and I understand it, and these guys understand it, so we don't have to redo the 20%. That's kind of, and I'm a little confused, to be honest.
This would be considered a capital plan, correct?
Say that again.
A capital plan, this would be considered, okay, thank you.
If I may, I have a few questions for Woodard and Curran. So I guess, for some of these questions, let me backtrack and not get into like the gritty stuff of, you know, where the roads and all that stuff is going to be modified. Under climate in the report, it did state on there, obviously, 52 inches of rainfall average for the Town of Montverde. So I guess I'm curious to know if the intensity, duration, and frequency was also considered aside from just the annual average rainfall?
Yes, when we do the design of these, we are looking at a specific design storm. And we can, as we move through design, we can let you know how that design functions under different storm events.
Now, for the design storm, is it like a 25-year storm, or 50-year storm, or like a 100-year storm?
Well, we have not done design. At this level, we're not doing design, so we don't have specified pipe sizes, inlet capture, any of that at this point.
Okay.
That's one of the first things that comes next, is to look at a specific design storm or design storms and see how the system functions.
But that could also modify, I guess, some of these plans, right?
It may change inlet spacing or sizing, yes.
Okay. Next question. So I went through, obviously, all the numbers, the cost, the 20-year lifecycle cost, and the operations and maintenance cost. I, I didn't see anything in there, I guess, accounting for inflation. So obviously, operation and maintenance, 20-year, I think in the report it said $95,000 per year, with an additional $59,000 and change for labor, but I didn't see like any adjustment for inflation. So to me, those numbers are not fully realistic, if you would. So is that something, maybe I missed it, or is that included in here? Like the adjustment for inflation for future cost?
We look at some level of cost escalation, whether it's on every single line item or not, I would need to look. I don't think what's included in here is, there's probably about 25 pages of Excel tables we do to run our calculations on the cost estimating, and I don't believe we've included that in the packet.
Okay. By the way, I still have maybe like another six, seven questions. For the option two, 7th Street and County Road 455, it did state in there that the drainage basin was not studied. Is that something that is supposed to be done now, or is it supposed to be done afterwards?
I'm sorry, it says what?
Uh, here, uh, let's see, let's see. All right. So for example, for the option two, we're talking about option two, and the report is 3.3.2.6, Site 6, which is 455. And I'll quote exactly what it says. It says drainage basins along County Road 455 were not studied as part of the facilities plan, and locations of BMPs will be dependent on subsequent watershed analysis during detailed design. So I guess my question is, is that, I guess, like standard operating procedure to do that at a later time and not now?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. That is, that is one of the first things that happens when we move from this concept to, as he said, that kind of, you know, anywhere from 15 to 30% design is what happens, that's what happens with that step.
Also, for the acquisition of the easements, I believe there were, I think it's option two as well, there's at least two or three easements that would have to happen. And I'm mainly focusing, I guess, as to the cost. Let's see.
Some, if not all of those easements, may exist already by right because we tried to minimize where we change the outfall, but because of the funding source for these, the state will require documentation of that easement.
Okay.
So it may be a very easy box to check.
Okay. So I, I guess where I'm getting to is, with the easement costs, it says on here for Site 1, Site 6, Site 6, Site 7, total of $63,000 for the easement acquisition. I guess this is assuming that the homeowner or the property owner is just going to say okay with whatever the town offers them? This is not factoring any type of litigation for eminent domain? Like, is that not factored in, I guess, is what I'm trying to get to?
Not going to an eminent domain aspect, no. And like I said, in most of these, and I'd have to get into the details on each one of the project areas, but I don't think we were looking at a taking from any particular landowners. I think in many cases, this was county land, or it's already dedicated, um, town property that just needs an easement dedicated to stormwater.
Yeah, because I did see one cutting through a property, like an actual, right, single-family residential property that cut through, and I think for the academy, also, I think there's additional space that needs to be, I guess, taken as easements, so.
And there may be, and with the Montverde Academy site, keep in mind that that one is also proposing to benefit their property as well. So it's not expected that that would be a difficult acquisition to get.
Are you meaning the Franklin Pond one? That went straight from the road to the?
Yeah, where it's supposed to go deeper and wider.
That's actually town property.
Okay. There was something mentioned here in regards to utility fees. It says the town may want to consider implementation of a town-wide stormwater utility fee. Can you, I guess, elaborate on that? Is that, now, it says, obviously, consider, but it's obviously in there for a reason. So is that something like to foreshadow that the town at a future date may need to implement that utility fee of some sort to the residents?
How a jurisdiction goes about maintaining their stormwater system is their decision to make. What the state is looking for us to do within these facility plans, and they are very prescriptive on what has to be included, and I'm talking about long-term funding of how the system is maintained is one of those elements. So you may want to consider a stormwater utility fee, you may never want to consider a stormwater utility fee, and that's fine. We just put that in there as it's a consideration because it is a common vehicle for paying for maintenance of stormwater systems.
Okay. And then as to, obviously, we have Osgood, 137 houses, so developments like that, or possibly any newer ones, would that affect any of these, I guess, plans, if you would?
It's not anticipated that they would. New developments are required to meet current-day stormwater requirements, and that's going to be a lot more than what some of your older developments were subjected to.
And then last but not least, so the design of these roads are obviously with the stormwater in mind. But I guess, like, when or do we even get to know as to what the traffic impact is with these designs? Because obviously, you know, for the second option, the third option, you know, they do change on some of these like greatly. So I guess from a traffic standpoint, like, is there a traffic study at some point in this, or at a future date, to take a look at how those specific designs will impact traffic?
So the changes to the roadway are not such that they would change the amount of traffic that those roads could convey. It, it's not changing it in such a way that it's going to impact traffic in a negative fashion.
And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much.
I have, I have one question, actually. Did I miss in here this packet? And if, if I did, I have tons of notes here, but did I miss the annual operating and maintenance cost to our residents? Was that in here?
It is in the report, whether or not I have it on my slides. Here we have, yes, you have the total annual O&amp;M cost for each of those. So it looks like with alternative two, we're looking at $119,000, and with alternative three, $120,000. So it looks like with alternative two, we're looking at 119,000, and with alternative three, 122,000.
Okay. One thing I should probably clarify there is, again, what we're doing is, we're not creating any additional impervious space. We're not, there's, we're creating additional stormwater systems, pipes and things, things that have to be maintained. But what those are, are the expected costs of the improvements that we're making in maintaining those stormwater systems in those areas. There's some amount of cost involved in those today, whether you're spending it or not. So that, it doesn't count, it's not, this is not necessarily truly additive. This is, this is maintenance cost for these areas that are being improved. Even going back to the utility, the stormwater utility fee question, that's a revenue source that would be dedicated to stormwater, but you guys are, you guys are doing some sort of stormwater maintenance, as it is right now, out of the general budget. So there's no necessary, there's no reason necessarily to do that. It's one option for dedicating a revenue source to that.
Okay, thank you.
Since we're on the topic on that, 119 for alternative two, towards the end, it does say on here, "Stormwater operations and maintenance cost estimate, alternative two," says 95,000 for, let's see, overhead and profit, let's see contingency. So it says 95, and then below it, it has labor for 59,000. So I guess, where did that 119 come from?
That's a summary cell from a much more detailed spreadsheet that you're looking at here, it's not additive of those cells above it.
So it's safe to say 95,000 plus the 59 in labor per year is what we should look at in regards to what the cost is to maintain annually? About estimate, of course.
You're looking at the totals, and then looking at, over the life cycle of it. So it's breaking it down on an annual, so these assume a 20-year.
Okay.
So if I have a resident that comes up to me and says, "How much is this going to cost a year to maintain?" I'm going to tell them 119,000 dollars? Thank you.
Yeah, and Scott's saying that we already spend money maintaining our stormwater. I don't know what it is, you know, what would you guess?
Yeah, I mean, we do have money in our public works budget, because under that AMS4, our MPDS permit, we are required to, for instance, our baffle boxes, those get cleaned occasionally, they have to be pumped. So we have those in the parking lot, we have that on Lowry Road. We are required to go out and clean, for instance, we have that broom on the machine. There's a couple times we've had to go down, you know, times per year, we go down and take the broom and clean around the inlet boxes and things along that line. The mowing that we do along the side of the road, that's a part of the maintenance stuff that we already do. So there will be more area to do, so it will increase, but we do already do some of this. So, you know, I don't have a, you know, some of this area, we probably already do some of that, but, so there will be an increase, probably not in 119, but there will be something, because it will require more public work maintenance to do that.
Do you envision another public works employee?
No.
Alright, I sort of do.
I think we're going to be good on public works for the next couple of years, so we're pretty good.
As you mentioned Lowry, and I can be honest, talking to my neighbors down there, that never gets done, which...
Yeah, we, they go out there and sweep it quite often, believe it or not. So it just, every little rain, it goes down, there's still a problem going on there, because it's such sandy soil, coming off a couple of those lots, it just always creates a problem. And I know we do take care of the baffle boxes, we've had to check those and clean those sometimes. Mayor, if I could, could I take a second? Because I do want to make sure, as we're talking costs, we bring up the construction costs related to that. That's probably a good time to do that, if you're okay with that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I just want to make sure the council, as you look at this project, and this is true with the water project, it is a, it is a fully funded project, you know, with grant money. The project budget, we, by purpose, like we did with the water system, we always make it higher than what our grant is, because we won't have the opportunity to go back because of the time and correct this. So we can always not do a section of it. You could love 80% of it, and as we go through the next stages, you could say, "Focus on this," and we'll see where we're at here, you know, as we go through design. So it's not an, you know, an all or nothing kind of scenario. So there may be some sections, you know, I'm going to ask you, where, you know, I'm sure we're going to have different teams work on this, you know, where do you want us to focus first? And there's some areas we may want to focus first because of other grant money involved. Next, I just, I just want to talk about as, we do these projects, so we have a 12.9 million dollar water project. We have this 19 million dollar storm project. And I've been supplying you that grant sheet, so you can see how our current projects are going. Where the town's going to have some expense involved in this, as we go through these projects, we're not going to have the general fund capital for the time that we write the grants, or write the checks to the contractor, from the time we get the DEP reimbursement. There's a three or four-month lag that's going to be involved in that. So in order to turn into DEP, we have to get the submittal, the engineering certification, the return check, pay the payment, obviously, and get that return check. Then we put together a package, and it's, once a month on a certain day, you can submit for the reimbursement. So that reimbursement will get processed, that could take anywhere from 30 to 60 days, and they're cutting the check, it could take 30 days. So generally, you're going to have a 90-day return on most of those. So as you can imagine, as we're doing two multi-multi-million dollar projects, you know, we may have anywhere from 5 million to 8 million dollars out the door at one time. So we're going to have to work with a bonding company, if you choose to, to move forward, to cover those interim amounts, while we're waiting for reimbursement through a line of credit, or something along that line. And so there will be an interest cost related to that, and a bonding cost related to that.
Is there a way to forecast that?
Yeah, I got some specific numbers that we'll be bringing to you, probably, I know I've already asked Scott team to start putting that together, because some of the other cities, I believe Mascot and some of the other ones that you mentioned, have just went through the process, so we can get you some really good numbers.
I'm sure you guys got...
Of what that would look like.
That would be very helpful for tonight, to be quite honest with you, you're asking us to get a bond.
We're not asking you to do a bond right now, so we're...
No, not right now, but to continue on, I'd like to see all of the information in front of me, before I make a decision on this. This, that's, a bond scares me.
Even if we move forward this evening, could we pull it back once we see that? I mean, I agree...
Well, this is going to take three months to get approved by DEP. I mean, once you turn this facility plan in, they're going to come back with some comments, so you're probably going to have some back and forth. So we have time to look at that before any engineering's going to be done whatsoever. And we got the same scenario with the water, you know, with the water side. You know, even if you just did the water, you know, we could, just the water tower alone, we're going to get a 2, 3 million dollar bill probably on one of those cycles. And it won't be every month, it's going to be intermittent, back and forth. You know, we may have some months where fine, and some other months, you get a bunch of big payments at once. But you need to be aware of that, you know, as we make those. And we plan on getting into that with you here pretty soon, as we go through the process.
But the bond situation won't change.
What's that?
The bond situation won't change, we're going to need to do a bond in order to move forward.
I think either project, yeah, I'm not sure how you would do it. We have a wonderful cash reserve, but a lot of our cash is restricted funds, so we've got to be careful. We don't want to run into audit compliance issues as we go forward with that. But when the project is done, there's nothing left. So it's literally just those interns, you know, as you call it, basically a line of credit, as you would call it, for the short term, as you do each of those. And we'll have specifics here pretty soon, the team's already working on that for you.
Have we been paid by FEMA yet?
What's that?
Have we been paid by FEMA yet?
No.
That's why I'm against the bond.
But FEMA's not a grant.
I get that, but the government is the government.
Yeah, we've been, as you look on the grant sheet, we're beginning our DNP, DEP reimbursements, and you know, we started on those.
The sheet we do, we're getting refunded like every month, I think we got like 400,000 this month. They're pretty quick on grants, the FEMA, they're a nightmare.
Yeah, FEMA is just the process, because you're, you have to get the money approved and allocated. This, we have the money approved and allocated.
Is FEMA a nightmare, Sean?
Absolutely.
Do you have any experience with this, taking out a bond and like a line of credit to move forward with a project of the scale, or?
They got plenty of money, they don't need a...
Oh, yeah, right, we got plenty of money, and we're still waiting for 15 million dollars from FEMA. We don't, we have, we took a, we took sort of a short-term line of credit, or short-term loan, actually, just two weeks ago, for Harwood Marsh Road and County Road 44 in Lake County. Because DOT is allocating that money, they've actually moved it up forward for us, but there's still a two- to three-year gap before we'll actually get paid. So we're going to, we'll start getting paid back from DOT, but we're doing that just to get the project done now, instead of waiting two to three years, because it's, when you factor in interest, and that would be something to think about, the time value of money, when you're looking at all this. You know, what it costs to wait to get this stuff done, the projects are not going to get any cheaper. And what, depends on what your interest rate is for some kind of a short-term bridge, or a performance bond, not a performance bond, but a bond, or short-term loan, whatever, whatever you decide to call it, or go after. You do need to factor in what it would cost to do all that if you waited, instead of just going ahead and doing it now. And on a couple months period of time, it's probably, you know, a short-term gap, that's probably not very much on interest, if you were doing a line of credit.
But we can look at it.
Yeah.
Later, we can move forward now, but look at the pipeline of the money later, in the next, after the next section, and decide, they can do a forecast, and let us look at that, make sure we're all comfortable with it.
To that point, Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, like, if you elect to move forward tonight, there's nothing, there's nothing you can't, there's nothing you're doing tonight that you can't decide not to do later with no penalty, like. So, and the only, the only reason I bring that up, I mean, you know, we serve at the pleasure of this board, we'll do whatever you want. But keep in mind that we're sort of a year behind the grant timeline, because of, because we've moved this over to stormwater, and every month is critical, where we're running into a deadline on the back end. So don't let something like that, which are questions we can answer and decide later, hold up the approval. I mean, if there's other reasons you want to, that's fine too, but just my two cents.
Okay.
I have another question, sorry, that popped in. So you all are recommending alternative number two, is that correct? Now, I guess, can you, and if you did, I apologize, but can you like specify as to why? Is it purely solely on cost? Or is it like a combination between that, and for example, underwater quality nutrient loading summary? The total nitrogen load, and then also the phosphate load? Like, does it have to do with that, or is it just solely based on the cost of it?
So when it comes to this particular funding source, when we're talking about the FDPSRF program, they require that the selected alternative be the most cost-effective. You are allowed to pick a different alternative, but then it is your burden to pay the delta. They're going to only pay for the most cost-effective one. So it's not based on nutrients removed, or volume of stormwater detained. It is purely based on the dollars it takes to, for the project to be done.
And just to clarify, like, we're trying to achieve a certain water quality benefit in those cases, so the water quality benefit is the same regardless. So we're basically choosing the most cost-effective option, even though it's also, I mean, when you do the math, it's obviously the most, the least cost for the same benefit.
Thank you.
Do anything?
Yeah, so the original purpose of this grant was to reduce pollution to our waterways, correct?
Yes and no, so the purpose of the grant, the purpose of the Clean Water Program under which this, under which this grant lives, is to do that, to provide for water quality improvements. The only reason I caveat that is because this is a kind of a special vehicle within the Clean Water Program that is an appropriation for hurricanes Fiona and Ian, that is also designed to make the town more resilient to future storm events. So it's to reduce flooding, so it's a water quantity issue as well as a water quality issue. And both of those are kind of factored into the overall evaluation and the eligibility to be using the grant money for these projects.
And transferring this is still consistent with that, that goal? That's the goal of this project, is to do that? And is there a figure or percentage difference that we can look at between the original and what we're at now with nutrient load removal?
So real quick, let me clarify one thing. The design storm for this will not be a hurricane event. Okay, that's not a normal design storm. So just don't want anybody to think that if these are implemented, you're not going to have any impact from hurricanes. You will have a more resilient system, and a more resilient community with implementation of these. As far as what the nutrients are that are being, the totality of the nutrients removed, I do have that in the plan, I don't have it here with me tonight, I apologize. But it is a net benefit.
Just as long as DEP still approves us for this moving forward, even though it's maybe significantly different nutrient load reduction.
I'm sorry, Mr. Roberts, different from what?
The original, the...
From what it is now, you mean?
Yeah, the sewer project to this, and I want to know, you know, take a look at the percentage of the difference, and just make sure that DEP is still okay with...
They wouldn't be looking at it in comparison of the previous sewer project to the stormwater project.
Okay.
I'm sorry, when you were saying before, were you talking about the sewer project?
Yes, that was, yeah. The original purpose of the grant was the sewer, the sewer project.
We may have that calculation done somewhere, I can, I can look at it, but it's, it's hard to, I mean, if you look at it, pound for pound, and dollar for dollar, you're going to move, you're going to, you're going to remove a lot more nutrients through a wastewater project, that's got to obviously a concentrated stream to do stormwater. But again, they don't judge that, they're not looking at before and after here. It's, when it got moved over to stormwater, everything about this is expectations of what a stormwater project can accomplish.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, I have another question that popped in, sorry. Back to the water quality and nutrients. On the table for the option two, it says, "The existing annual total nitrogen load is 647.5." With the proposed alternative two, let's see, is 684.4. So, I mean, to me, it's not a huge improvement from where we are, but we're sinking in, obviously, grant money, 21 million and change, but then we're eating the future operating and maintenance cost. And then also for the total, what is it, phosphate, phosphate? Phosphorus, let's see, it's 113 existing, and then with the option two, it's 120. So again, it's not much of a difference from that angle. So I guess, if, if the whole premise of this is to increase, or to make water quality better, to me, it's not really doing much of a difference. I mean, I'm not an expert in this, but just looking at the numbers, it's, that's probably less than 1% increase, like in better water quality. So I guess, like, you know, maybe I'm looking at it the wrong way, or, I don't know, if there's anything you could elaborate on that?
Well, two things, you're looking at, you're getting nutrient removal every single year. So even after the project's constructed, you're still getting nutrient removal for the life of the project. And as long as it's in operation. The other part that you need to think about, or I would encourage you to think about, is that you are getting improved capture and conveyance. So we're getting the water quality portion of it, which is amazing and great, but we're also getting the water quantity improvement as well. So you're getting multiple benefits.
But minimal benefits, that's along what he said, minimal benefits.
Maybe consistent with the type of stormwater improvements that are being implemented, with the expectations of those.
Okay, alright.
I mean, you know, if that were the pure goal, and the basis, and the pure basis for the grant, we could design something that was a lot more elaborate, to specifically, specifically focus on treatment of those things. It gets ordinarily expensive to incrementally remove nitrogen and phosphorus, without, you know, with this, with what we're doing right now, or even to increase the level of treatment. It can be done, it's just, it's just an escalation of costs.
Especially when you're dealing, especially when you're dealing with low concentrations. The reason that wastewater projects are easier to get kind of a dollar spent versus pounds removed, they have high concentrations to begin with. You show a stormwater stream analysis to a wastewater engineer, and they're like, "That's clean water, what are you talking about?" So you're dealing with smaller concentrations, and it adds an extra layer of difficulty.
Okay, so you need us just to say yes or no to move forward?
Yeah, public.
Oh, I'm sorry, come on up, public, who wants to talk?
Kelly Moore, 17029 Florence Field Drive, Magteras. I'm taking it all in, and a couple things occur to me, when we looked at the maps up there, we've projected 21 million dollars, and I'm wondering, was it based on how much money we had to spend on a grant? So we're kind of working backwards from need, that's the first question, meaning, if it was, if we had a grant that was 40 million dollars, would you find... dollars, would, would you find streets to work on if we had 40 million to spend? Because this kind of sounds like we didn't really have this need, but we had the funds, so we tried to meet the need to the funds, so it's a little backwards to me.
They can't hear you on the mic.
So do, do we have, if we had 40 million dollars to spend, could we find 40 million dollars of roads to slightly improve? Uh, so it's a little backwards, the, the concept, it wasn't something that we sought out these grant funds to do this, we just happened to be able to say, well, we could do this because we've qualified for A grant, so now we're going to Plan B. Now, that's just, not, look, I'm looking, I work on need, is there a need here first? That's one. Second thing, what I saw, there was partitions going down 455, it looks like it's a median that's put in down the middle of the road, i- is this gonna allow for the bicyclist to use the roads with a, with a car, not really able to swerve around them, because the bicyclists typically don't ride on the bike trail, so if they're on the road and we have a median separating it, how's that gonna be as far as with the bicyclist? I'm not advocating for the bicyclist, I just know it's, they'd never use the bike trail, so how is that gonna work with that kind of traffic? The third thing is, the, the construction with Osgood coming in, when that breaks ground with 140 houses, or whatever it is, pretty close, how is that gonna interfere with all this proposing to start in 2028? And those residents who are kind of like behind the 711, before you get to the Osgood property, how is that, all that construction gonna be handled along with the Mont Verde Academy traffic? So I'm looking at the impact of the existing residents, is this, you know, we're, we're trying to spend the money, but it wasn't something, if we didn't have the money, did we really need to do it in the first place? Is there a mandate from the state saying, if we don't do this in five years, we're gonna be in serious violation, so we better just do this? That was what we were told with the sewer, but then, we didn't do the sewer. So, I'm just having you understand what's the impact to the residents with the ongoing projects upcoming, how is this median gonna work with the traffic flow? Let's say a semi wants to move a new family into Osgood, and they're bringing the semi down 455 from Leesburg or whatever, how is that median working with the, with the traffic, with bicyclists and everything else as we? I have a resident here that tells me Lake Florence is in good shape, so I, you know, I'm looking at, what are we cleaning up?
Well, let's take your, one at a time here, the medium, I brought that up too, because I don't like the medium, they're saying that the medium can be removed. Just, just part of the deal, they included it, but we can remove it.
So an option not to have one, so that would free up that you can get around the bicyclists without, you know, giving them a ride away and not being filled like, hey, this is.
That's correct, right? Okay, so then what was the other one now, the?
Because we have this money, are we trying to fit?
Got you, okay.
What we have to spend on, you know, what roads we can afford.
Well, what we do is, we got the 19 million, 19.8, and said, do we need 19.8 in the, in our hilly areas here to, to make sure the water flows collect correctly? And they were able to find areas that could use improvement. Are there more? Probably, I don't know if it's 10 million more or 100 million, but sooner or later it's gonna, you're gonna get too much money, you don't need all that money, but they're saying right now that we could put it on storm drainage in the, and use the 19 million dollars.
Is, I think, one of the concepts that Councilman Ruben brought up was, if we have this increased cost over time to maintain it, that's one thing. Another thing is, borrowing the money short-term on major projects like this, that's something that this town hasn't done yet. I'm not saying it can't happen, but is this the project where we want to essentially stick our necks out to borrow the money for the short term?
I'm with you on that, and that's why I asked, can you forecast the cost of the interest we're gonna be paying? And right now, to, to move forward with it, doesn't cost as much at all, but they're saying they can bring that back in the next meetings and show us in increments what it's gonna cost us in interest. And we, we can make our minds up then.
I, I think, I know this is on the agenda, but can we make sure that all the residents are aware of these discussions before they get too far and it becomes the situation where many of us who work and whatnot, we didn't really know what, where the sewer was projected to be and then when it came to a head, so that this, this starts going.
YouTube, we're doing tape in the meetings.
All right, those, those are my statements, thank you so much.
We're trying to do as much as we can to communicate with the residents. Anybody else? We tried to eat and invite them for dinner.
17557 County Road 455. I'll eat the microphone again. So, you should scroll back to the 455 map, it's a little too general, so you can't actually zoom in and appreciate how much land I'm about to lose. So it looks like it's about 15, 20 feet, is now gonna be, so my front tree is gonna be gone, very old tree, that's now gone. My neighbor's got a very old rare tree, that's gone now too, I think it's protected even. So I'm gonna lose pretty much all of my front lawn, my driveway is a crescent driveway, I'm gonna lose the crescent bits and it's just gonna be a slab, if that's what I'm seeing right. They're saying, it's not final, it's final, it's on 455, what else are you gonna do? You're not gonna widen it any other way.
I personally like the railroad side.
I really do like the railroad side, that's what I am.
We have tons of, tons of land on that side of the road, why would we come your side?
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm with you on that, I think everybody would be with you on that, would you?
Exactly right, Carl, it's just common sense, and can I have a guarantee, I don't think this is gonna go anywhere, but a guarantee from anyone back there that my house isn't gonna flood? If you can't answer a question, that's all right, whatever, come back later and answer it, but that's, no, that's a no! So I'm gonna have all this water, my, you've seen my house, it's kind of a pool, right now, naturally, water goes around, God bless it. Now removing just everything, 20 feet in, and I'm on a very sharp downward angle, everybody knows my house. So I wanna be sure I'm not gonna flood out. Again, if this even goes anywhere tonight, doesn't look like it is, but I don't buy the, let's agree now, two random terms that we don't even know yet, and then we'll figure it out later. We don't know what it's gonna cost, but we'll know down the line, if you stick with us long enough, maybe. I mean, absolutely ridiculous, well, that's all I got to say as a homeowner, so good luck with your decision tonight.
Well, I think we've all can pretty much agree that we can eliminate 10 feet off of the median. Is there anybody that, this isn't a vote, this is just a vague feel-out if you're interested in actually losing the median.
Well, she's taking this all in right now to go back and, right?
So that, I mean, underscores the point that, again, what they said earlier is that what you are looking at is not a finished project, and just the discussion here tonight amplifies that. Now, what the images that we see here show a median down the line. It, it's 10 feet that may not necessarily need to be there, I don't understand the whole point about, you know, putting the swell down the, down the median, that part I, I don't know, I've gotta learn more about that. Everything else shows that the swells on either side are variable, so we, we really have no clear idea of what this road is gonna look like until we sit down and figure it out. That's kind of my thinking at this point, am I way off the base here?
I wonder if we had the same discussion with the area where Mike Stone lived, that's, that's the concern, right? They, he, he brought up a great point, that was for stormwater, and pretty much the drainage of that went right down his house. I mean, that's my concern, we're, we're looking at such a massive project here, and it's gonna affect a lot of people.
Well, that's another question for you guys, they, you have it broken down into to 10 various sites, okay? Is, is that the order as well that these will be attempted? No?
No, no, not necessarily, I mean, I think as Paul mentioned earlier, right, right now, the cost estimate is greater than the, than the, than the grant proceeds that you have.
Yes.
And, and that was, it was by design that we came up with a few different project concepts for a couple of reasons. Number one, this has to go back to DEP and they have to, I mean, the reason we're submitting this plan is because they're gonna look at this and are gonna say, okay, what do these meet eligibility requirements, what are these are we gonna approve and what are we not? So there's no guarantee that they come back and say, you're good to go with all this. So we wanted to make sure that there were enough options to capture as much, as much benefit from the grant money that you have going forward. I think, I think that was the primary point there, if, if it comes back that, that they don't approve all of these, well then there's a few that are, you know, whatever they don't approve or whatever they don't like, we either change or we decide we're not gonna pursue that. Or, you know, at some point, when, once we do the design and we have a more detailed cost estimate of what these cost, you all can decide which ones of these are more important to, you don't have to proceed with them all, you can look at them as, as nine or 10 discrete projects.
So we do not have to cover all of this, we can pick and choose the pieces of this plan that we wanna do.
Correct.
We can leave 455 out altogether if that's what we decide.
Correct. And, and, so let me, the other thing I wanted to say is, you know, I mean, the gentleman talking specifically about his property, even Lakeside for that matter, Mr. Morgan Elliott, like, separate subject, but it was neither the design nor the construction intent for that to be happening, we'll fix that.
Correct, right, no, I get that, I mean, no one, no one gets, starts constructions and says, I'm gonna flood a house out, I, I mean, I get that part, right?
But, you know, the, there's all, I mean, for every, for every property that looks, that goes, oh, this might affect, like, those are things that happen during design, which is exactly why we're, the, the purpose of this plan is to enable the use of some of your grant money to actually go through that and, and do the, do that level of detail and, and determine exactly what, you know, where things go and, and what, what does that mean for the neighboring properties?
And, and correct.
Including modeling and flows and all that other kind of stuff.
So we've had two projects, we've had that project on Lakeside, it flooded Mike Stone's residence, and then if you remember one, down by you, that gentleman, three houses up from you, his house was completely flooded when the county did that route. So that's two, we're two for two on floods on homes.
Did that house happen to be on Ridge?
On Ridgewood, yes.
Just off Ridgewood, the new one right on the corner?
No, that was, I don't remember.
Which house?
Remember which house it was?
It's Brett Minnie's house, it's like four houses over from my house.
Yeah, going up towards, on the right-hand side.
Going towards, up the hill, on Ridgewood, yeah. There's a storm drain right there and the county did some work.
It makes perfect sense that that house flooded, that house flooded before it was ever built.
The one on the, the Four Lakes?
If it's, no, no, the.
It's on Ridgewood.
It's on Ridgewood. If it's the house that I'm thinking about, that.
Yeah, but the back of it's Four Lake of Water.
It's, yeah, one of the ponds.
Whoever decided to build a house there oughta be shocked.
I've been dealing with that for 15 years, that house. That, that's that drain that the county put going up from that house and going this way, here's, here's our Ridgewood, and it goes under, under like this, and it took me forever to get, have the engineers figure that out, and on this side here, it, it flows up with the level of the water, and the house is right there, when it finally goes over, that whole thing needed to be redone, and the county would not do it.
My, my point is that it's just, we're two for two on every project we do.
When you look at these, let me, let me help you here, I can tell you, I live right here, I live right here, and the water that comes down Ridgewood, I mean Porter, to Lake Florence Park, is a, is a waterfall, and when it rains, and all that goes into that little tiny pond there and all that stuff, where it's supposed to be, it doesn't work, it hasn't worked, that does need to be addressed. Then you go over to Neil Drive where it comes out and it hits A Street, this, this right here, I mean, anybody that's lived here a while, you, you've been there, this is a hill right here, and it comes down that hill and all the dirt comes down here, and this, this right here, this is Judy Smith's house, there's a wall for their house right here in the driveway, it's, it's six, eight foot tall, so you can't see all that here, but all this dirt comes down here and it goes around here, and it doesn't make the turn, it doesn't come here, and that's the, what you were talking about, I think, this right here where it went through the properties, that's town property that's supposed to be drained into this. I would want one of those filter things that we did on Lowry Street seven, eight years ago, put over here so the water that comes through, it does need to be redirected, but the water comes through and it goes through the box and gets clean and then goes into a Franklin Pond, and obviously that costs a lot of money, but I can go through all these pictures, because I've lived here 30 years, and understand why you picked a certain areas that you did. I do get stuck on the 455 thing, which is easy to do, but all these neighborhood places have a problem, so I understand why you picked all those. I just wanna say that.
Even the east side of, of Lakeside gets pretty bad down there with, with dirt piling up, so.
Yeah, it gets bad, it's, you gotta go drive around, the only way you see is drive around when it's pouring rain, and you'll, you'll see it, it's, it's just amazing. I don't think we're talking to you guys, are we? I'm teasing.
Can I speak?
Okay.
I've been where, I've been where they said you can't even speak. My name's Randy Elman, 16603 Lowry Road, I just have one question, how much have we paid them, well, do we owe them anything right now?
We're gonna have the grant money.
It's out of the grant money?
Yeah.
And how much is it gonna cost if you approve it tonight to the next step?
I don't know, that's a good point.
But, but it doesn't come out of our budget? We get reimbursed if we, if we?
Yeah, if we, if we, um, for instance, the ARPA money that we used, we used 1.4 million dollars doing a survey and a couple of other things.
Right, okay.
And then we decided to back out of it, so we just had to give them back the money that we didn't spend.
Okay, so we have money.
Is that right? Need it, I'm right on that, right?
That was true of the ARPA funding, yes.
Yep, see, that's, that's how it works.
So we have money to pay them in full?
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get reimbursed.
To what they're at right now, and then if you go to the next step, we still have money to pay them if you back out of it?
We could go, I don't know how far down the road, you guys wanna speak on that?
Yeah, so currently we have the, the funding for the planning study, which we're doing now, and that, we've already been receiving CHAFI, DEP reversals for that, so all this planning gets studied. Once you approve, or if you approve this plan, the plan goes in, and once they approve that plan, then the engineering is then cleared to be funded, on the engineering side, and they can start on their engineering.
Right.
And then, and whatever the engineer will be funded. And, you know, it, it's, we're kinda, kinda with the water, I know, we, we walked a similar process, it's, it's, and a lot of it's just requirements of DEP and the grant funds, you have to take a little step, they review, you take another step, they review, and you keep doing these steps through the process.
See, what I'm saying is, we, maybe we only need 5 million dollars.
Right, right.
These places need, need repair.
Okay, as long as we're on the same page with that, I mean, you know.
These people need repairs, I can tell you.
Yeah.
We're gonna decide what we do on all this.
Yeah.
And I, I'm happy to ride around with anybody and explain all the, I don't understand too much about the 455 at the moment, but I do about the neighborhoods, the neighborhoods could help.
Yeah, I guess the only thing that scares me is, you know, taking the loan out, 'cause I, I asked one of the council members, you know, the contractors are gonna wanna be paid, you know, and so there's a gap there.
We're not gonna be spending any money, big money, until we approve it, and I don't, you know, I'm struggling with all these projects, but we'll see, you know, that's just me. You guys know anything? Thank you, Randy.
I had one more question, has DEP mandated this project to us? Is it a mandate from DEP?
No, there's, there's no mandate for this.
Thank you.
Come on up, oh.
Matthew Bamm, 1122 Imperial Eagle Street, a lot of opinions tonight. The fundamental question though is, is there a need to improve the stormwater in the town? And my answer would be yes, because my property along 455 on a decent rain becomes a river on the sidewalk, and it fills dirt back in onto the concrete slab that I didn't even know was there until I scooped four inches of dirt off of it. So I'm in favor of the project, and as a business owner, would I pay a small percentage of money to get 19 million free dollars to build a lot of infrastructure? Yes, I think I would probably make that decision, but there are a lot of parts of the town that need it. Again, this is not the design phase, as I understand it, it's just the conceptual plan of what might be done. If the Scott Lane project's done, I'm totally fine with them taking the median out, so it's a big hassle down there. But I'm, I'm for the project, I think the town needs the improvements, I think this is a great way to get it done. I would be a little concerned if we give the grant back twice as to applying for grants in the future and getting them, because.
Yeah.
Nobody wants to waste their time.
No, we're gonna spend some of it, no matter what.
Thank you.
Come on up.
Mr. Morgan, can I just clarify the answer I had before? So there, there is no mandate for this project specifically, as there was no mandate for the wastewater project specifically. Mont Verde is in an area of, of the Basin Management Action Plan for the upper Akawah River, which includes Lake Apopka and the chain. So at some, at some point, there is a requirement that you do something every year, I mean, there's a portal that's opening tomorrow, where each, each jurisdiction within that, within that Basin Management Action Plan area has to offer projects that they're doing to contribute to, to clean up. So it could be anything, I mean, some of those things you're doing already, so this would benefit that, but the, the project is not specifically required, but there is a, there is a benefit to a regulatory requirement that you do have.
And there's a benefit to our neighborhoods, little neighborhoods. And there's a benefit to our neighborhoods, little neighborhoods.
Uh, what about, anybody have any particular feeling on 455 around the corner headed down towards the Academy?
That's where his property is.
Right.
He says it floods over there.
Correct. So it, just spitballing, if we, if we eliminate 455 going north, once you, once you go past the flashing light, right, up towards Fosgate, if we eliminated that and just left that as is, and then looked at 455 south through wherever we decided to be, or if we decided to be at all. I'll just say through the, wherever the joint back up, I guess it's after the roundabout or just prior to the roundabout?
I agree, but it might be too early to eliminate anything. We want to look at, keep looking at it and then say, okay, we want this, this and this, and that's only 12 million dollars.
Put it out there as a possibility, uh, open for discussion.
I agree with you on that. I mean, again, I'm looking at this as a whole. I, I mean, again, I've mentioned about the bond. It's a major issue for me. I'd eliminate almost all of 455 to be honest, talking, you know?
I mean, I, I think if we can, in pick and choose the, the parts that like Neil Avenue, the, the one, or Neil Drive, the ones that, that are really in the, the highest risk, the higher priorities. I, I don't believe that the northern end of 455, again, I haven't seen, I've seen no evidence of, of flooding. I, I understand the concept of being able to move water from one place to another and have it filter out, you know, naturally or, or through baffle boxes or whatever it is. But yeah, 455 is, is kind of just a big, a big question mark. I, I do kind of like the idea of doing something down in front of the school and adding the turn lanes because I do think that that will help with the flow of traffic and yada, yada, yada. So I see additional benefit to that, to, to doing that part. But I'm, I'm not married to the northern side of 455.
All righty. Can I help you?
So I would absolutely agree that when you're dropping from ninth down to eighth on Hickory.
You gotta say your name and address.
Aaron Wadsworth, 17647 Ninth Street.
Thank you.
So absolutely, we have a problem when you're dropping down from ninth to eighth on Hickory. Uh, I've seen more sand, or I've seen less sand on beaches than what accumulates at the bottom of that hill. And that's just normal rain. None of our systems here are even remotely prepared to handle what use has got. 19 inches in four and a half hours.
Mount Dora, same way.
I mean, that whole area, uh, I own a home up in that area that my parents reside in. It was ridiculous, the amount of erosion that happened just in regular properties around all the side roads. Cause none of that infrastructure is set up to handle anything remotely close to that. Ours is way worse than what they had up there already. So anything that we can do in a future repair would be good. I think one of the things we haven't talked about with 455 heading up towards Fosgate is that part of this also is to propose to add sidewalks all the way up to Fosgate as part of this as well? Is that correct? Yeah. So there's an added benefit, like you're talking about. And that in this, we would get sidewalks all the way up to Fosgate that we're missing, that we're missing today connecting some of the other developments up on the hill. As far as the median goes, totally with you. When we were talking about the meandering road and the effect of traffic calming, having a median made sense because there was a benefit to it. But if that's no longer within the budget, then there's no point in having the median, which then causes the bicycle problems, right? You can't pass a bicycle if you can't cross the line, all of those issues. So, I mean, I think 455 should get redone. We get the added benefit of the sidewalks along the way, but no median. So maybe my thoughts.
And nobody likes the median, I don't think. But we, let's just, I, I would suggest that we let them do their thing and move forward with it and keep us well informed and not get us backed in any corner. But I can see us going to be spending some, some of this money no matter what.
Part of the plan, just to be honest, it, it, I think a few of the residents mentioned like the need. And again, I get those areas that you're mentioning, the one that Aaron had mentioned as well. That, that riot, that road, that area is impossible to ride a skateboard down, to be honest. That's what I sort of zip around the town on. You cannot do that. So I agree with, you know, with you over there. That, that area is horrible. That area does need to be done. But question, again, I know we're going to move forward a little bit, but is everything here to be done? I guess that's the question. And I'm still hung up on the bond. I definitely, you know, from, towards the end, I'd like more information about that before I would give a final yes for that.
Kelly Moore, 117029 Florence Field Drive. Mayor, you, you made a good point that you said, um, people could come along with you. You can show them where the need is in some of these streets. I'm, I'm wondering, uh, at this time, where, how is that? Where's the infrastructure been and where was the funding all along that we, that we're living like that now that we have an issue? That we don't have money now to fix it progressively, not at each street every day, but like paving the roads. We don't pave all the roads at once, but if we have the mentality that, hey, we've got some issues here, is that falling into the county or was that supposed to come? Let's say the grant didn't exist and these issues exist that you're talking about. We could ride along with you and go look at them. What, how would the town address that in a stepwise fashion, like, okay, most important things we do now?
I'll tell you.
And what money would go on to that?
The, the places I show you, they constantly go out there and, and clean it up. We spend money on labor and equipment to go clean up after rain and that, that adds up after a while.
So, so is this more of a drainage, like ditch digging, or is it just?
Depends where it's at. Some of it's drainage, some of it's water moving through people's, you know, front yards.
So my point is, in our general fund of the town amount for, not the county, how much of our budget do we have to fix those things if the grant didn't exist?
Well, we're spending the money every month. I mean, every year. I don't know, well, you know, I, I did five years.
So at some point if the grant wasn't here, would we ever fix those over time or they just kind of?
Not the way they can fix it. Not, not as much as we can fix it with the money.
Okay.
We can fix it.
So a scaled, a scaled portion of this is what you're envisioning?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think over the last 10 years, the only thing really storm related was Lowry Road and that was a partial grant funded, if I recall.
That was, no, we paid for that.
Was it?
No, no.
There were some grant funds.
We paid $650,000.
Did you get Lake County Water Authority grant funding? Oh, I thought that was.
I wrote checks out of our account for $650,000. But that, that was the biggest thing I ever spent money on.
Alan Hardle, 16191 Hillside. One issue that I'd like to address is Fosgate. Fosgate is a crested road and it reads on the north side is Lake County. You know, I should say on the western side is Lake County. The eastern side is Montverde. That road drains from my area north of mine on Far Lane. It dumps down and it follows all the way around on my backyard and my three neighbors behind me. It proceeds to go down my backyard, drain on the road, follow the road all the way down and then it dumps. And Paul has mentioned in the past about putting some kind of a, we've talked about as a council, things to do. I think two years ago, digging little drains. We've got one at Hillside Drive and Hillside Circle. There's an area there that catches it before it runs in the common area and runs down into the lake. But Fosgate itself, I don't know if that's going to be a county issue. The county, as you go down to Four Lakes Lane, has dug, dug along the eastern side of Fosgate, little retention ditches. And they have maintained those, but they slow water down, but they don't stop the erosion that runs down through there. Kelly mentioned a good question about, you know, what would we do? We haven't had the money and if we want to stay at 2.83 millage rate, that's what we've lived with. If you want to go to five or six on our millage rate, we wouldn't need the bonding, which I'm in favor of the bonding and, or not the body, I'm sorry, backup, the grant money, but not the 455. I think these areas, like you've mentioned, Mr. Mayor, they are serious areas. I know Judy's house.
Oh, yeah.
It's just that whole thing, every time it rains, it, it's a washout. And you pick the dirt up, you push it back up the hill, next range it comes back down to the same spot. So Paul has done good and the town's good done in the last 15 years or so to solve these problems, but the money wasn't there. And that's why I always say, April 15th, what do you do? You send your money to the federal government. April 16th, historically, how much money has come back to Montverde? Bottom line. Only times we got money has been FEMA and storm damage. So from this point of view, I think this is a good project with the exception of 455 to fix the local streets, the local flood areas, the flood zones that we know of and address it from 455 at a later date when we have a little bit more problem solving on our local streets to the north of 455. My thoughts. Thank you.
I have one other question, I guess.
Go ahead.
Adding that 100 and, I think it was 120,000, correct me if I'm wrong, on the maintenance and everything, how are we going to afford that every year? We're going to, I, I'm guessing we're going to have to raise millage rate. How are we going to, how else are we going to afford another 120?
Talking before, we might be spending 40,000 this year doing it. It's not the whole, is that what you were saying? Like what I was just explaining where we go out and clean up stuff, that costs money. Where, that's, that's employees.
Yeah, I mean, some areas it could actually reduce the maintenance costs and some areas it would increase, um, the, I will say how the engineers usually do it is usually, usually how a large city would do it normally. I mean, we find ways to do things cost effective here. So, so, I mean, generally your maintenance of your storm areas are going to be shoveling out your inlet boxes. Occasionally you may have to go, which we have the equipment to do, you know, clean out a ditch that's, um, become filled up. Um, would be example, the baffle boxes, um, the leaves have to be cleaned off those, you know, anywhere for usually twice a year. Um, occasionally you have to get a septic tank in to pump those baffle boxes. That's about, you know, 400, $500. So it's not like a, a constant scenario. I, I mean, personally, I think that number's really high just because we would do it with staff and not contractors, um, that we have, um, because we're already doing some of that.
But you don't, and you don't have a cost for us though, right?
No, not, not, not off the top of my head, no. I mean, and it all depends on what you do, um, some of these projects, and some of this project is in the county and still will be a county road. They, they may incur some of those costs too, if you do on 455, there's, you know, or some of that, some we may do. Some of it, um, you know, involves the detention pond, you know, so that detention pond is on the Academy because they're going to accept all the water, um, coming down Highland and on 455 in front of them. More than likely, I'm sure the Academy will be taking care, which is probably the biggest cost of the maintenance, um, taking care of the ponds. They already take care of the ponds. So, um, you know, they're, they're telling you, here's the total project, but there's also other partners and players involved and we'll have to, you know, vet that out once we decide where you want to go with each of these projects.
Okay. Anita, I have a question for you, just, and you can look it up until they're done. Our charter, Article 5, Section 5.06. That's, I'm going to ask you about that in a sec. I did, that way they can continue, but I want to give you a heads up so you could look that up in the meantime.
Alan Hardle, 1619 Hillside again. We've talked about the water quality, but yet we have a problem on 455 that hasn't been addressed for two years. I'm sorry, Sean. When you did the box on 455 two years ago, the county did the drain box. They refixed that side, but they didn't put a baffle box in there. And we've always talked about, why didn't they put a baffle box to catch all the stuff that runs, that comes down and catches there and then does what it's supposed to do, but it brings everything that's, has floated with it into Lake Florence. So we're spending money to fix a problem and we create a bigger problem. We've talked about that on council about what to do with that baffle box. Do we need to get the county? I know it's kind of been a, like everybody, nobody's got money, but yet that was kind of partially.
They were just replacing what was there.
Yeah, and it needed to be, it kind of made it a little worse, but they fixed what was collapsed and so forth and now.
The water flows a lot faster into Lake Florence now.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It's dirty water.
We just, you know, we're wanting to do all the money on 455, but yet we have an existing everyday problem that continues from there. And I don't know if that's, like we said, Mr. Mayor, that's our problem with the county or how we address that. That's something that popped in my mind.
Something they can fix with this.
So, thanks.
Yep.
I, I wanted to address one other comment about the, the annual O and M cost. If you look at the slide up here, the O and M alternative one that says do nothing, one of the bullets on there says high O and M cost. So that's not just the cost that you're currently incurring. That's also the cost liability if something happens in the future and you don't have these drainage systems in place. So another storm comes alive, comes by, you know, washes out some major section of roadway and you have to start moving dirt. That's a liability that you guys have that you wouldn't have or that would be minimized if you move forward with this. You guys had a storm pipe collapse over in Four, in the Four Lakes area a couple of years ago, like,
Oh, yeah.
Again, that's a liability to the town that, you know, won't occur in these areas, or at least the risk of those gets greatly minimized. And so we look at those things too. It's not just what, what are the costs that you're spending today? But what, what are you, what are you going to be liable for in the future or, or the risk associated with that that gets priced into doing nothing? So again, it's, just wanted to make sure that was all kind of captured in the analysis here.
Yeah, that gets traction. Okay.
Scott, real quick question, Scott. I didn't want to wait till you sat back down again. Part of this, I don't see like number of feet, um, of pipe, you know, how much piping, um, retention ponds, catch basins, swales, et cetera. I don't really see all that in here. And I know it's a requirement for, it's under SRF rules. So, um, sort of why we don't have that in, in here.
There, I don't think, I mean, the quantities aren't in the presentation here, but they're in the actual plan. I mean, we could summarize all that. But, um, that, that's, that's what we build up the, the cost estimates based on.
Okay. I wish you guys would include all this stuff. I mean, this, you're asking us for 22 million dollars.
Is the plan included with the backup too? I, I, again, I.
I didn't see that number of feet or any, I didn't see any of that. I would have had, you know, I, I, yeah.
We, we, I mean, we tend to follow along with, with the, with the prescribed format from DEP, but, um, yeah, sorry, it's not in there.
No, I mean, well, again, it's FDPs, SRF rules that require those quantities. So I would think that would be in there. You know, because we need them. I mean, we need to see that too.
Yes. Is that right, is that right here?
All right. Thank you.
Donald Lippam, 16533 Pine Timber Avenue. Everyone through these, look, I've gone back and forth on this a couple of times tonight because there are areas that certainly need some improvements. But the wholesale of Seventh and 455, um, especially as we go back and forth on medians, I don't know how that would ever work, how you would have those breaks for those homeowners to be able to turn, make a U-turn if you pass their driveway in a full, anyway, a full size truck, that stuff's just not going to work on 455. But we do have areas in town, so I'm not completely opposed to this because there are certainly things that, that need to be fixed. In your packet, images 3, 4 and 3, 5. Uh, those show our issues on Scott Lane and in Trusket Park. And those images show our current challenges with maintaining the system that we have in place. And we use that as justification and reasoning to say, oh, we need to make some additional changes and build this system out further. If I recall, those pictures were of leaves and silt and all those other kinds of things that were in our existing system that we're currently having a hard time maintaining. And in our last budget meetings, we've talked a lot about staff is doing so much stuff, right? Staff, we're, did we need another person? We finally got everybody hired. We recently put the landscape contract out because we couldn't handle it in-house. We wanted more, so we got somebody from outside at an additional expense. So we were already stretched thin. Stretching us even thinner seems like that could be somewhat challenging, especially based on using that as the basis for meeting kind of a different system. All right, the medians, we're good with that.
We didn't mow yards in-house.
What's that?
We didn't do our yard work in-house.
No, no. One of the things, no, no, we had somebody out, right? But one of the things that expanded that scope of work was that we were having, at least that was what I heard, was that we wanted the new provider to do more things that we were doing in-house. So the budget went up significantly to add more services.
Well, we want, we want more flowers.
Sure.
We want more attention to certain corners, things like that. And the company we had couldn't perform.
But instead of Public Works having the capacity for that, we needed somebody from the outside and that's, I, totally understandable. But now if we have a bigger system that requires more maintenance, but we didn't have the capacity for flowers and the median.
Well, that's where you go, like, I, I get involved in properties all, all out, Lake County, through Lake County. And there's quite a few, um, cities that have a stormwater tax. And, and it's very small money. It's like $35 or something like that. And that's what I think this young lady was talking about before. And I'm not for that. I really don't want to put a stormwater tax in place. So I would want to look at the 100 grand they're talking about and say, hopefully we're already spending 40 of it. I'm only talking about 80 of it, 120 there.
And I think before you made that vote, that would be a, I think, an important thing to know. How much of that 120 are we already spending?
Right, but again, if we move forward right now, we're not obligated. We're not, we're not saying we're obligated tonight.
We know what it took to stop the sewer train once it left the station.
Oh, no, I got it stopped.
We did. And, but we spent a lot of money. We did. And, but we spent a lot of money on that trip, too, right?
But it wasn't our money.
It wasn't, but that's...
We are, we are taxpayers. It comes out of our taxpayer money.
Took me a year and a half to stop that.
Right, no, I get it. And I just, it seems like we don't, we've got so many questions that we want to wait till the next time we come back and, and kind of keep things moving. I don't know that the no-action alternative is really that bad of an alternative, especially at this point. And again, I don't, we have problems. And coming down into 8th, like Aaron's talking about, I guess what I don't understand about that is, so we have now a system to catch the soil after it's left the property at the end of the street.
It just ends up in the road, and they go and...
But it's not preventing the erosion, right?
There's, I don't think there's any system there at all.
Well, no, but the erosion, the soil, the sand is still gonna wash, and now we've got more, it's still gonna be there to clean up, right? It's not stopping the sand from leaving the residents. Does that make sense?
No.
We're collecting the water, but as that water comes through the properties, it's still washing into the street and still putting the sediment and silt and everything in there.
I'm not sure yet.
On Neil and 8th.
8th Street, you said?
Well, Neil, we've got one in, in the pines that that's happening with, and the various locations. So, we're talking about...
With Neil, we have to, we pick up the dirt and take it away.
Correct. But if we have a catch basin at the bottom, it's not, it's not solving the problem of the soil coming off of the property, right?
Well, it's, there's nothing there made to handle the water coming down, so it's using, it's taking the dirt, so we have to make something there.
That's what curb and gutter would probably, if it was uphill from there, it would catch it, get it into the, the storm drain system, and then bring it down at a lower elevation without washing out over the property, going over top of the property going down.
Yeah, it's just dirt.
So, we've got multiple blocks. Okay. Okay. I guess that, that's kind of what I was wondering, is that it doesn't seem as though it would stop the sand.
I know, I get weird once in a while, but it's raining really hard. I jump in my car and go ride around the town to look at certain areas.
I do that, too.
So, you've done that, but, yeah. Because I want to go see what the people are yelling about. And I've filmed it and texted our public works and stuff, because it's this deep at certain times. And they're like, I don't understand it. Well, here's the flow. And if you, you film it all the way up the road, they can see what's happening, you know, while it's happening. This, this should clean, clean that up with no problem.
Yeah, the, the issue on the road you're talking specifically, there's a pretty steep degree angle, and all the water kind of heads toward Hickory and that area, and then runs down the edge of the road. And it just keeps increasing volume and volume and speed and speed as it goes down, picking up until it ends up at the bottom of the, of the next street. So, their proposal has some inlets, so that quantity doesn't pick up that speed. It's put an inlet in various spots, so there's not quantity and there's not speed, which reduces the erosion, basically.
And I want, I want to see a box at the end, right before it goes into Franklin Pond.
Yeah, we'll have one.
And the box filters it like we did on Lowry. And that, that lap eight years ago was going on $700,000. I'm sure it's a million five now, just to put the box in. So, 19 million disappears pretty quick.
So, I guess where I'm at is, we do have issues. There are things that need to be fixed. I think that the question about the way that we maximize the grant money, and I get it, but I don't know that we need to spend all that money.
I agree. We just gotta figure it out.
Right? And, and those types of issues and challenges, and I think...
Just gotta figure it out.
I just, it also feels like there's just still so many questions that we've got to take to the next stage, that we can't get the answer to those questions before you guys approve the resolution. Once you approve a resolution, it's harder to turn back.
Are we, we're just kind of proving that to move with the drawings. That's it.
Yeah, so you're approving the concepts that DEP can look at the storm project and see if, what, because they may say, we're not gonna approve 455. They may say, we'll approve this, we'll approve that. They're gonna look at the study and see what will be approved. Then, once we get approved, and once council decides what they want to move forward on, that's when we get a lot of these answers of how will this road be designed, you know, because you have to work on utilities. You have to get the surveying done, the elevation shots and all those. So, you know, there, it's kind of a, again, a stepping stone process. And this, this process is more for DEP to look at and say, under the grant agreement, under the agreement that they have with the federal government that they agree to and that we have with them, do these projects meet the requirements of the grant agreements? And if so, what parts of them and whatnot, you know. So, like, for instance, by the school, we have turn lanes shown in there. More than likely, they will say no to that, but we have another funding source for that if we do the turn lanes over in, by the school area. So, that's what the purpose of this is, for DEP to see if these projects meet the criteria of the grant. Once they say they do, then we gotta get to design to figure out what these things look like and how they go. So, in a, in a normal thing, you would, you know, you'd meet, you'd say, hey, we want to do this to a road. The engineer would design it. You would design it. They would show you the picture. You go out and bid it. This process, we're walking through the DEP process of, do these projects even qualify for the grant agreements? That's basically what you're approving now. Do the projects to remove that water and nutrients, do they meet the DEP requirements for the grant?
And again, if we don't want to do the 455, we're gonna decide as a team here, yes or no on that. But I can tell you, there's five or six places that need attention.
Okay. And I guess just one last thought. This wasn't a problem until we had the money to fix the problem.
Why you say that? That don't make sense, though.
Well, no, no, there are, there are parts of town that need to be fixed, and I don't disagree with that at all. I think it gets us back to that scope of it, and knowing that there are, just be careful, because I think that the sewer project drove a wedge right through the center of town that we're still kind of going through, because we had a lot of unanswered questions early on, and it got a long way down the road. And I think people got their feelings hurt and just turned into a whole thing. And it just feels like we still have a lot of unanswered questions.
I voted no all through the sewer system. I agree with you 100%.
Except for when you did eminent domain. You didn't vote no for that. When you voted to do eminent domain, you didn't vote no for that?
No, because then I knew that everybody was gonna be upset.
Right, but you didn't vote no.
I, I wound up bringing back the ammunition we needed to table the whole sewer problem.
I think the residents brought the ammunition to shut that down.
Yeah, but didn't even have a move forward with it. Go ahead.
And council, I was gonna say, some of these projects, you know, going back to the selection, you know, because this is, you know, we've looked at some of these storm projects, but three, two, three, four years ago, and whoever was at this meeting, or at these meetings, you know, we've had a lot of residents have come in, complained about water quality on Florence Lake. That's why a lot of this is around Florence Lake. We've had them come in. We've done some special sinky testing. There was a time where we were talking about, do we put that chemical in? That sinks all the garbage. The water quality hasn't improved on Florence Lake, and we've done some stormwater projects. So, we've had residents that have come in forward over the years and talked about that. We currently now have, you know, complaints coming in on Franklin Pond. This, this project is a huge one for Franklin Pond, just to reduce the sediment, you know. And that's a part of it. We got phosphorus nitrate removal, but a lot of things that the storm projects do is it slows that rush of water down, the sediment down, and it gives it a place to settle into the ground instead of going to the lake. So, when they do those sinky tests, you know, when they pull in to see how far you can see, that helps improve some of those. So, anyway, I just think there's a lot of benefits to it.
If we don't want to move forward, if we don't want to move forward, why? And if we do want to move forward, what exactly do we want to move forward? I'm closing public comments. We're gonna, I'm done, I'm done. We're done. Okay, so let's just talk about it as a council. What do you want to do?
I have an issue with the bond, but I understand that there are areas that need to be looked at. But, so I, I understand we need to do something for some of these areas. I do agree with that.
Okay, Carol?
I, we do need to do something. I'm kind of thinking if we go through and, and we are a bit more selective, that possibly it comes down to the point where we wouldn't have to do bonds. But, yeah, I'd say we move forward. Yeah, there are aspects. There are places in town that, without doubt, need, need the work. And being that this is still in a discussion mode at this point, I am willing to move forward to see if we can pick and choose and, and what that does to our overall cost.
Okay. Ruby, go ahead, go ahead.
I was just gonna say the same thing. I'd like to see what part of, parts of the project costs what potentially, and if we cut what, what can we afford moving forward without having to take out significant loans to do these projects?
Right.
So, I agree as well with certain streets, obviously, need attention. I, I think, you know, the, the 10 sites were picked as a wide net kind of thing, and then throw it out the wall to see what sticks. At least that's the way that I'm, you know, hearing, you know, how this is kind of being formatted. It, in my preference, I would like to kind of know the next step without committing to it just yet. You know, that's just my opinion from that aspect. And I know it's a little bit hard because of just the format of this is has to go to DEP, see what they shoot down, if they shoot anything down, and then, you know. But I also don't want to go into it kind of blindly. I don't get a warm and fuzzy feeling when it comes to some of the costs. There is obviously different opinions. Obviously, the town manager, you know, you know, holds a little bit more weight because he's on the day-to-day operation stuff. But I, I just didn't get that warm and fuzzy feeling with the numbers as to what the cost is in the future. The utility fees and things like that, you know, that are brought into the mix is just, you know, there's a cost that now we're gonna pass on to the residents, possibly. You know, and again, I did bring up the adjustment for inflation, so some of these numbers are just not realistic, and I don't feel comfortable with that. So, that's just kind of my mindset.
Anita, did you, by any chance, how do we fare on the charter? Because I asked Paul about the ongoing, the maintenance costs and everything, and our charter states for capital plans, what we need to, what's required under capital plans.
So, the capital plan gets adopted, I think you adopted it this year, April, May-ish. And so, if this project moves forward and DEP comes back and approves the projects, and you say, we're gonna do these projects, then we have to make sure that's in the capital plan that gets adopted in the spring, if it's not already in there. And I don't have a copy of it to be able to pull up your current capital improvement plan.
Okay, so for future costs, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking about?
This is capital, this is a capital project, is what 5.06 is talking about. So, the actual construction of the infrastructure would be a capital project. And before you expend funds, you have to make sure it's in your, your CIP.
Right, I asked at the very beginning of all this, if, I asked Paul if this was a capital project, and he said yes. That's why I was asking about that.
It's a capital project if you construct it. The ongoing maintenance, operation and maintenance is not a capital program.
Okay, so we're looking at going forward with this without really a true cost of what it's gonna cost in the future?
But that doesn't have anything to do with the capital improvement in the charter?
Right, no, I get that, yeah.
Well, we're not sure what areas we're gonna do yet, so how can we come up with a maintenance number if we don't even know what we're gonna build yet?
I know, I just...
That's wrong stuff. I make a motion that we move forward with the project.
It'll be resolution 20, 25, 25.
A motion to approve resolution?
Move forward with 2025 dash 195, and see what happens in the next step. Need a second word, another second.
I'll second.
You got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, ayes have it. Let's keep moving on here. Let's go to resolution number 2025 dash 197. Oh, 196.
Resolution 2025 dash 196, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Montverde, Florida, increasing the residential and commercial solid waste fees resulting from increased disposal costs passed on by the service provider to the town, providing for conflict severability and an effective date.
All righty. So, you're asking for more money? How much more are they asking for? I don't really understand. You want to explain it, Paul?
I'll, I'll second. Let me pull it up.
I thought we had it per dollar.
Was it per dollar?
It is a 22 cent adjustment.
A what?
22 cents.
22 cents?
Yes.
Serious?
That's what their October 31st letter states, that the last year's rate was 29.09. The current rate is $30.98. The disposal increase was $1.89. They did their calculation over a 12-month period, so it increases 22 cents per month.
So, this is the dumping...
For residential.
Yes. And this is the dumping fee charged by the, by the facility, then, under our contract, they pass that fee on to us. You will still see a CPI increase. I think it's usually in March they do their CPI increase, so that'll more likely be coming behind that.
Now, I'll open up the public. Our garbage company wants to charge you 22 cents a month more. How do you feel about that? Okay, so bring it back to, bring it back to the council. How do you feel about that?
I mean, this is like a third increase in recent memory?
Yeah.
Something like that?
Say that again.
This is like a third increase in recent memory?
I think that's correct, yeah. Like I said, they're, they're, they're entitled, every time the dump increases, if they increase next month, they'll bring another one back because they're passing that cost on to us per the contract, and they're entitled to a CPI increase every year. And to, I believe, usually in the spring, we see that.
The CPI, you have an option. You can say no to these CPI, but the disposal is a true pass-through.
Quick question on, at the bottom of the 196 on this resolution, it says, it shall take effect on November 1st, 2025. Is that correct, or is it December 1st?
I believe the way you do billing, it would be November 1st. I had checked with the town.
Yeah, I believe that is...
Because they wanted October 1st, but you weren't even considering it, so I didn't want to use the October.
So, that'll go at the end of, the billing goes out next week is when you'll see it.
Okay, not good.
So, they're, it's already, we're gonna be billed for, but we didn't approve it yet? Am I understanding correctly?
It'll, well, the hall, it'll be for the month, prior month services. Yeah, that's correct. The 22 cents will go out.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 2025 dash 196.
I have a motion. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Didn't say nay. Ayes have it, 2025 dash 197, if you would please.
I still got...
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Montverde, Florida, amending the 2024, 2025 fiscal year budget pursuant to Section 5.05 of the Town Charter, to transfer funds from general fund revenues to various general fund departments for increased expenditures in the permitting department and garbage solid waste services fees, providing for an effective date.
You want to explain this, Paul?
Sure. Mayor and council, this is last fiscal year's budget, after we ran our final numbers, requesting an increase in permitting of $65,000 and an increase in garbage and solid waste to $12,500. Both of these are in-and-out funds. Basically, the permitting's increased because we had more permits pulled, so we had to pay our contractors, Alpha Inspections and Parks Consulting additional funds. So, the revenue was increased to match the expenditures going out. And the garbage increase was for more customers than expected, so as well a ridge came online, it came on a little faster than we budgeted a year ago. And so, then therefore, you'd have the increase in the garbage services. And again, the revenues, we have additional revenues to cover the expenditures going out.
Question for you on that one. Permitting, are we ever, is it, why is it not self-supporting?
It is.
It is, okay, so...
Yeah, so the, the revenues for, for permitting, I don't have in front of me, but we, we collect in usually 35% more than it goes out, because we pay our administrative fee or administrative costs for that in town. So, you know, we should have, I don't have front of me, but a million dollars in revenue from last fiscal year, somewhere in that ballpark. And, and so, that's the increase. I always, every year, you're gonna get a permitting increase, because I always budget conservatively, because we just don't know. It's hard to predict a year in advance if you're gonna sell 10 houses and they're gonna pay those permit fees, or 100 houses. And I'd rather come back and have you amend the budget versus just throw something wild out there and miss it.
All right, yeah, I'll open it up to the public. Anybody want to talk about the permitting budget increase in the, I'm estimating $2,244 we have to increase to a budget for the garbage trucks? Okay, I'll bring it back to council. Any discussions?
Can we throw in an extra 20, 30 dollars, whatever, just so that we don't have to amend it again when they come back in three months for another increase?
Well, they can't come back now to May, right? April, when the contract's up?
Well, if, next month, if the garbage dump increases, we, they have a right to come back and ask for it.
Yeah, we can say no. Yeah, we can say no. I did 20 times. And guess what? They kept getting our garbage.
So if we say no, we can still expect the town's garbage to be retrieved?
I mean, if it was something that was really effective, you know, high money, just $2,200 a year.
It's change. It's just the idea of having to go through it three times a year to the whole process to amend the budget.
Next time they come, we can say no.
Just say no?
Just say no.
22 cents.
Any discussion, motion? The permitting, we take the money in, we bill the money. We don't really, there's no money there to, we're spending. We just got to make the budget higher because we didn't estimate taking that much.
Our contract with Alpha, what is it? The permitting service that we use?
Well, it's Willdan now, actually, Willdan.
So, how often is that priced out and looked at to be competitive?
We've been with them since I've been here.
Yeah, about two years before you got here.
Yeah. We did negotiate through some contract. It's usually a percentage of the permit fees is what everybody does, and I think they're in line with what anybody else would do. There's not a lot of service providers. There's a few independent people, but the ones that, you know, because right now we need fire reviews, for instance, and things, and it's, you know, that's actually being done 100 miles from here, the fire reviews, so.
Or if there was an issue with quality of service?
What's that?
If there was an issue with quality of service provided by them? I mean, could that be looked at going forward, or?
Oh, sure. Everything could be looked at, most definitely.
Just a question.
Okay, need some discussion or a motion to approve 2025-197 or deny it?
I make a motion, we approve resolution 2025-197 as written.
A motion, need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And say nay. Ayes have it. Okay, what reminders we got right now for next meeting or something? Tomorrow night's the public P and Z meeting.
Correct.
It's the first one on Calico Lena, so I tell everybody to come that's interested.
I have a bunch of stuff yet to discuss before we just, before we end our meeting. All right, so a couple things I wanted to wait till the end, instead of doing it during my time, I wanted to ask council what their thoughts are on, something for Paul. You do comp time and everything, and I had asked previously, who is, who's policing that? And I think you had said you are.
What's that? I didn't hear you.
I asked who was policing, like Paul's comp time, like who's monitoring his-
Paul's comp, yeah.
Yeah, and you said you do. And Paul, we are all, we all should be reviewing that. So I actually would like to ask, as part of our monthly binder, that Paul puts a detail, not a detail, just a basic summary of time spent and what it was spent on. We don't have to discuss it during the meeting, but it would be something in there so that we can all see it, what time is being spent and where, which would also allow us to potentially see a lapse in staffing. If we start seeing tons of time being spent with water, we might need to look at those type of things. We can be proactive with it. So that's actually something I'd like to bring up and ask council what their thoughts are.
What's your thoughts?
The other reason being is that now, when, you know, Paul's able to cash that out, I think we need to be cognizant of it and monitor that.
Anybody got any thoughts on it?
So I guess, like, how often, like, so for the reporting side, like, for example, like, if there's whatever reporting format, like, how often, like, would it be then to review?
I'm open to that.
Like quarterly, every regular meeting?
Well, I was thinking every meeting, we could put it in there, just like we do with the projects. We could do that. Again, it doesn't need to be down to the minute, obviously. We can do something where it's rough, but just so that we have an idea of what's being spent where, what time is being spent, where the time, overtime would be spent at.
What he does all day, is that what you're saying?
The overtime, the overtime part of it, for the comp time.
I think from the aspect of metrics, to be able to obviously, you know, I guess, compare the future to something in the past. So if we take on projects, then that increases. I think it would be a good way to track it, you know, from that aspect, where we could actually say, well, you know, this is what, this scale of a project is going to take a toll on, for example, the town manager and obviously. So I would agree, I mean.
I think maybe if we tracked it on a quarterly basis, just given the fact that we have events, especially into the fall and winter. So there's a lot of overtime and compensation for that. So my suggestion would be look at it on a quarterly basis.
I agree. Quarterly sounds good. You know, that way we can take a look at, like, the holiday season, how much is dedicated just to that specifically, and then, you know.
Quarterly, I like quarterly, I guess. Let's, can you make a motion?
Anita, can we vote on this? It wasn't on the agenda.
It's a reporting request. I don't know that it requires formal vote, just a consensus, but I do need to go back and look at the contracts, because I thought there was something that said he reported time and it's approved by the town, the mayor. So I just need some time to make sure that that's not contrary to what the contract says.
Yeah, I'm not, basically, it's just why we wouldn't be able to know the time. I'm just trying to get an understanding of what the time is, not an approval. We're not, I'm not trying to get where all of us need to approve it.
It says he reports it to the mayor, it doesn't say the mayor can't report it back to the council.
Right, I mean, that's fine, too.
I'm just trying to make sure that it complies. I'm not saying, I didn't understand that it's only for reporting purposes. It sounded like you wanted to have approval of that.
No, just reporting. No, just reporting. And again, not for giving discussion.
To make sure that it wasn't spending time on things that you thought was excessive, so.
No, no, just for reporting. So that way, just in case you have a situation where maybe he's spending a lot of time on something.
I assume you're asking for generalities, because it's almost impossible to do specifics, because like, for instance, on a normal day, I have a council meeting, I have comp time, I may take eight hours off, and I may have 10 hours for Montverde day or Christmas or something like that. I could put you a general, this is generally with the comp time, but to tell you what hours were each, because if I work less than a day, that reduces the comp time. And I don't even get comp time till I'm 10 hours over, so there, it's a little, going to be a little more complex than just, you know, write down on the timesheet when I'm over, because I don't even get comp time till I work 10 hours over my 80 hours, period, if that makes sense.
You're, but you're recording that, though, right? You're recording your comp time.
But it only comes comp time when I'm 10 hours over the 80. I clock in and I clock out to keep, well, 80% of the time I clock in and clock out. Most, sometimes things don't get recorded. But what I'm getting at is, it would be hard, like, this week, how do I, it would be hard to break down, I left a little bit early the other day, but then how do I break down my 20 hours extra, 30 hours extra Montverde day, then I'm late for this meeting, late for plan zoning. I could show you, these are the reasons for the comp time, but then I got to subtract the 10 hours that doesn't count the comp time, that give the town for free every pay period.
Personally, for me, what I was looking for is where that extra time is being spent so that in case we need to, you know, additional staff down the road to address something like that. That's what I'm looking for. That's the part I'm looking for, really.
Yeah, that's fair. I mean, in general, just so you know, it's council meetings, Montverde day and Christmas and the concerts, I mean, the extra activity stuff. But yeah, I could definitely get some generalities on it.
Okay.
I just need to play with it a little bit.
All right. Another question I had is, can we get a podium for this, please? Like, because for the residents, that they're standing there with their phones or with their papers, it would give an opportunity for them to have a podium there. We used to have a podium there, and it sort of went somewhere. I don't know where it went, but.
The music stand or the podium?
A podium would be nice. I mean, we, a podium would-
I would agree, yeah.
Sure. I mean, the only issue, because we do set lower, just saying, is the podium does block views of you being able to see faces. I'm fine with it, the council's fine with it, so.
Tie it up?
Okay.
We have one, don't we?
We do, it's huge.
Nice, that's an easy one. All right. I'm going through my list here. Committee reports, Visioning and Safety Committee. I wanted to sort of address that. I've spoken with people on both of those committees. I would actually like, personally, I would like to hear from, I mean, I know they don't meet all the time, but maybe every quarter, I'll say, instead of not monthly, I'll go quarterly. I'd like to hear from Vision, and then I'd like to hear from Safety, then Vision, Safety. But I'd like to hear from them, with not really having any input as far as, like, I think that those committees need to be separate and report, not, you know, somewhat report to the council, but I understand, I know you need to be involved in it, but I think that reporting to us, I'd like to hear from them, what they're hearing, what they're seeing out there from both sides of it. So that's one of my other topics I had. Okay, moving on. I'm good.
All righty, well, any other council people? All righty, well, that's it. Thank you for coming, everybody. Make a motion to go home.
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And say nay, nay. Ayes have it.